All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Jerry, Mark DeSanto's not here currently. Other than that, everyone else is, I believe. For the audience members, if you're looking for a agenda, you can find them on the back bookshelf to follow along. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from March 11, 2019? If so, entertain any corrections or motion for approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Our consent agenda, PJ.
Good morning. PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. Consent agenda. The following has been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commissioner recommendations to the Planning Board of, Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions. Item three, conditional use permit review 1428 for BLG Investments LLC. Brady Groves is the landowner to review the transfer of an existing conditional use permit to allow an existing residence to continue to be used as a vacation home rental. Staff recommends the approval of the transfer of the conditional use permit 1428 with 10 conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review 1634 for Jessica Thermis, excuse me, to review a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters for no more than 180 days per calendar year on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1634 with eight conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review 1722 for Pamela Phillips to review a single-wide mobile home to be used as permanent single-family residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1722 to the September 9, 2019. Planning Commission meeting to allow staff time for research and for the applicant time to work on alternative solutions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1738 for Daniel Johnson, Highmark Properties, to review a multifamily dwelling in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1738 to the April 22, 2019. Planning Commission meeting in order for the applicant to address the inadequate size of the onsite wastewater treatment system. Item seven, conditional use permit amendment review 1743 for UnderCanvas Incorporated UC Glamping Partners LLC. Jeremy Budge is the agent to review and amend the existing conditional use permit to allow recreational resort or glamping resort on the subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit amendment CU 1743 with 27 conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1838 for Daniel Johnson, Highmark Properties LLC, to review the multifamily dwelling with separate units, unit one and unit two, to be used as special resort/vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1838 to the April 22, 2019. Planning Commission meeting with one condition. Item nine, construction permit review 1803 for site work specialists to review the construction of a new water main, install water service lines, fittings, valves, valve boxes, fire hydrants, and other, geez, I don't even know that word.
Appertances.
Appertances, thank you, which include surface restoration and other incidental work. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction permit 1803 to the June 10, 2019. Planning Commission meeting. Item 10, telecommunication facility permit 1904 for All Telecommunications Incorporated. Robert Baker, revocable trust, is the landowner to review 190-foot monopine communications tower in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of telecommunication facility permit TC 0904 with nine conditions.
Are there any items that staff would like to have pulled?
Number three, please.
Item number three. Membership, is there any items that y'all would like pulled from the consent agenda? Any member of the audience like any items removed from the consent agenda? Items three through 10 are gonna, or four through 10 are gonna be considered as one vote if they're not pulled for separate consideration. Seeing none, that leaves our consent agenda as items four through 10. If that's correct, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, items four through 10.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number three.
Item three is conditional use permit review 1428 for BLG Investments LLC. There should be a new memorandum that was handed out to all the commissioners and should be in front of you today. With that, we don't, we're working with the applicants on alternatives of ways that they can try and get this vacation home rental in their name. They did not meet the requirement of the 20-day notice to the planning department for transfer. So we're looking to meet with the applicants, I believe it's this week, and possibly the new landowners as well. So with that, planning department will recommend a continuation of conditional use permit 1428 to the April 8, 2019. Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 11.
Good morning. Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item 11 is the review of a construction permit 1812. The applicant Brad Niebel requested to excavate a hillside for future residents. This has been in front of you guys quite a bit. The last time it was in front of you guys was on February 11. Since that meeting, the applicant has put in a silt fence to kind of protect the road It does need repairs, though. It's not pulled tight, and it's on the very end, it's not pulled up. It's supposed to be more like a J-hook to prevent runoff from going around to the other side. So we're gonna work, I tried contacting the applicant, never got a response, so I haven't been able to talk to him about it yet. Also, the state DNR was out to inspect the site at the request of Mr. Niebel. They're working on a report, we were supposed to get it, we haven't gotten it quite yet. But the state did email him back in February urging him to work with us on this issue. When I was out there, it appears that he's still not meeting some conditions. He has not implemented the cut and fill slopes yet, which is condition number two. Sediment has reached the right way. We still have not received any engineered plans to stabilize the hillside, and he's not following the stormwater manual and the criteria for erosion control and stabilization. And that's why we recommend, staff's recommending to continue item 11 to the April 8, Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
So what's the process if he just doesn't get back in touch with staff in the county at some point? Does the county step in and do something?
Good morning. Brittany Molliter, environmental planning supervisor. There's a couple of options. There is a performance bond ability in our ordinance. We can request a performance bond if he does not, is not willing to do that. We can also do abatement of the property and then put a special assessment on this property under our nuisance ordinance. So those are a couple of options that, if he isn't willing to do the performance bond, if we get in touch with him and he doesn't get it done within the seven days that he needs to get this cleaned up, if he had a performance bond in place, we could basically cash the bond. We'd go in front of the board, cash the bond, and do the work and get it reclamationated.
So what is the trigger for that action to happen? I mean, there's obviously the requirements from the DNR to stabilize the site and the county requirements to do the same. How far beyond that then do those actions? Is there a set timeframe before it's time to do that?
Typically, we would send him a notice, so after this meeting, depending upon what the planning commission decides, we will send him a notice telling him he has seven days to get this reclamationated. If he doesn't, then that would take, you know, further action, either requirement for a performance bond or an abatement, whichever, you know, that's kind of the discussion that we would like to have with this commission today.
Okay. Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
This has been an issue since January, even December, that we're not getting anything done with this guy, no communication. So I would recommend we take further, harsher action to get things done.
Any further questions, comments for the staff? Go ahead, Sandy.
What constitutes further action or harder action? I mean, what else, what else can be done or what can be done more aggressively than has been done?
It'd be what Brittany just talked about, doing either an abatement or a performance bond.
I'm sorry, what?
Placing a performance bond or abating the property and putting against his taxes, I guess, property taxes. So what she just mentioned would be, depending on what's decided, would be today to send him a notice that says he has seven days to clean up the property and meet conditions or a performance bond would be, have to be placed on the property.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
You say that we can request a performance bond, but he can refuse to get the performance bond?
Correct. That's basically what the state attorney's office just said, that we can request him to do that if he doesn't want to. She just said that we have two options that are more immediate, filing for the abatement under the nuisance or an injunction.
Now, is that something that we can actually do as a planning? Is zoning or is that a recommendation to the board of commissioners for them to do?
Uh-uh. Sorry. Michael.
Michelle Hoffman, state attorney's office. Absolutely. Planning and zoning might request a performance bond, but that doesn't mean that this gentleman is wanting to pony up, so to speak. There is a provision, I don't have it right in front of me, but there is a provision by statute which sets forth a process where he served notice if he, and there's a hearing notice before not this body, but the board of commissioners, I believe. And at that time, if he doesn't appear, the board can declare this a public nuisance and of course then move forward with abatement, and the cost of such abatement could be assessed against this property. The other avenue, which is really also very appropriate, is to bring a complaint seeking injunction. That's basically a court order mandating that he address this situation and stabilize this property. So there's a couple of different legal options there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So this, Michelle, is something that I would assume that we would recommend that the board of commissioners does?
I don't even think that you need to recommend. I think the planning and zoning, to their credit, likes to make sure that this body is very well aware of the issues that have been presented. It really doesn't require any action. I think they're looking for guidance from you, and I think they've received that, that you want to move forward, that this gentleman's received enough time. So at this point, I can meet with planning and zoning later today, and we can discuss between the two legal options what the best one is to move forward on.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
I do understand from the explanation this gentleman Brad gave us back in January that he's out of town, but we, at that time, instructed him that he needed to have a representative
Correct.
...taking care of this problem. He came back in February and had still not done so.
Right.
Was behind on all of that. So I think we do need to move forward.
Okay. Go ahead, Kathy.
This is a question maybe for you, Brittany, but do you have a sense of what the cost of proper abatement of this is?
We usually follow the DOTs. They have guidance for a cost. I would say, because they have to clean out the ditch. The last time that the highway department cleaned out that ditch and had to regrade and do some stuff, it was like $40,000. But I think it was a longer stretch area when they had to clean it out and regrade it. The problem is, is when that sediment gets in there, because the way that the ditch is, that it just doesn't have enough drop, that this sediment really affects that drainage patterns through there.
So the abatement, to really solve the problem, though, it requires more than just dealing with the ditch. It requires stabilizing the slope. Is that, and you can do that on private property if you go through these legal channels, these legal measures?
Through the abatement process, that's what we would ask. I know that statute, we've used it in the past. We've actually got a court order in the other instance. We can also go in front of the board of commissioners, and the board of commissioners under that statute could deem it a nuisance also.
Okay, and once it's deemed a nuisance, then you can go on the private property and do the work that's necessary to solve the erosion into the ditch?
Yes.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff?
And, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Sandy.
And then it would be assessed against the property? It would become a lien, the payment of the cost of the abatement would become a lien against the property?
It would not be a lien, it would be a special assessment. So it would be something...
An assessment, yes. But in order to sell, it would have to be paid off?
It would have to be paid by the seller, the second meeting in, or the second Monday of December, I believe.
I see.
Michelle Hoffman, state attorney's office. To clarify, a lien will remain on the property most likely until the property is sold. A special assessment is assessed against properties, just like any other tax. So if that assessment is not paid by the following, I think it's the second week in December when tax cell certificates go out to the public, tax cell certificate is taken. Someone hopefully buys that tax cell certificate. And then if it's still outstanding three years later, that individual can take a tax deed, but it is assessed against the property.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? So if I understand correctly, Brittany or Michelle, whichever one can better answer this, we just need to continue it today for y'all to have the conversation so that we can figure out the best recommendation, whether we're gonna do an abatement, whether we want to require a performance bond. We can do the requirement for a performance bond here today if that's what the board of planning and zoning wants to do, but for the abatement, do we need to know anything specific on that? Or do we, or could we say that we want an abatement on that and then find out what the specifics are?
You don't need to concern yourself with the abatement or the injunction. Again, without having the statute in front of me, I believe there's a process whereby he's provided a hearing on the public nuisance, and that's why you may enter the private property. This is creating a public nuisance. Therefore, the county has a right to go in and abate that. But it's, whether we, but that's a matter that's, a hearing that's before the board, I believe, not this commission. And as far as an injunction, that's just a civil action. Now, whether you want to allow this gentleman more time and demand a performance bond, that's certainly up to this entity, and that's why I think the planning and zoning has brought this to you, just for you to decide, do you want to give this individual additional time and request a performance bond? And I guess the question would be, what is the purpose of the performance bond at this point in time? But that really is the question before, I think, this body.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
I sense that if we requested a performance bond, we wouldn't get it. The simple things that need to happen on the site aren't happening, and there's been ample time and notice and everything else. So I agree with Mr. DeSanto here that we, that we should just move forward on this, and I'm not sure what action, so do we need to continue the construction? I guess that, I think that was your question. Do we, do we continue per staff's recommendation and staff move forward with other avenues? Because the problem's now. It's not, it's gonna be worse in April, type of a thing. It appears that he's put some stabilization measures on the property, but they're not quite doing it. So the next steps need to be taken to make sure that this doesn't affect other people in a negative way. So I guess I would, I would move to continue this item to allow staff to take further action on this property.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 12.
Good morning. Cassie Bullstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 12 is rezone 1901 and comprehensive plan amendment 1901. This is a request to rezone 6.94 acres from limited agriculture district to highway service district and to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to highway service district. The applicant is Fatter Boys Inc. Bob Fuchs is the agent. What this property currently exists as today is, it is zone limited agriculture district, 6.94 acres. Currently consists of three developmental lots, which basically means three separate lots that have always been bought and sold together, so they're considered one undivided lot at this point. Access is off of Highway 385, being an existing approach. There is special flood hazard area on this property, including floodway. And this lot currently contains an office building built in 1959, a bathhouse built in 1964, three small sheds, and according to our property record cards, there's 16 RV hookups out there. There is also a sign structure out there. Surrounding current zoning within a half a mile of this property is a concoction of all kinds of stuff. There's heavy industrial district, general commercial district, highway service, planned unit development, general egg, limited egg, low-density residential, and suburban residential, so kind of runs the gamut of all the different ones. Surrounding future land use within a half a mile is the same way, a gamut of heavy industrial, general commercial, highway service, PUD, low-density residential, suburban residential, PUD-sensitive, and public lands. This rezone request was routed through the interdepartmental review process, and nothing of significant concern came back. The subject property has been used as a campground since approximately 1960. Used to be the Twisted Tea Campground, and since it had been used that long, it was considered illegal non-conforming use. However, according to the previous landowner's representative, the campground ceased licensed operation in 2017. According to the zoning ordinance, section 401(c), it states that if a non-conforming building structure or portion thereof becomes vacant and remains unoccupied for a continuous period of one year, any subsequent use or occupancy of the land and premises shall be in conformance with the official controls pursuant to the provisions of SDCL 11226 and 11227. The applicant would like to restart operation of the campground on the property and expand upon the use to include a recreational area. Based upon that proposed use, he is requesting to rezone the property to highway service, largely because, according to the zoning ordinance, recreational vehicle parks are a conditional use in highway service. So he would still have to get a conditional use permit, but rezoning to highway service is a little bit more appropriate for the use that he's wanting to do. There is an existing sign structure on this property, previously advertised for Twisted Tea Campground RV Park. The applicant did recently install a new banner-style sign on that sign structure, which now advertises for the Firehouse Campground Beer Cation and Wine Resort. So as the last maps show, this request appears to be in harmony with the surrounding zoning. The nearest highway service district abuts the subject property on two sides. Future land use also abuts the subject property on the northeast. So staff is recommending approval of rezone 1901 and comprehensive plan amendment 1901.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
It's basically highway service all the way to the intersection of 385 and 16, isn't it? Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay. Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Go ahead, come on up, sir, and give your name.
I'm Bob Fuchs with the Firehouse Brewing Company, and this property had been a campground for, since the 60s, maybe even late 50s already. What happened was it was bought and sold a couple times within a year, and during that time, the license to keep it a campground hadn't been procured as that got bought and sold. And so that's what started all this, and that's why we're here, just so that we get it rezoned correctly and so that this is a use that can be done in this area. If you have any further questions, great, but we just want to keep it a campground.
Any questions for Mr. Fuchs? All right, thank you. Any other members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none. Current recommendation, staff recommends approval of rezone 1901 and comprehensive plan amendment CA 1901. Is there a motion?
All moved.
Motion? Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Takes us to item number 13.
Item 13 is ordinance amendment OA 1901 from Pennington County to consider the amendment adoption of a comprehensive plan. I'll try not to have a coughing fit today during this discussion. There were some items from previous chapters that we left unfinished and continued because the person, or the commissioner who made the comment, or commissioners who made the comments were not present, so if you'd like to go back and revisit those first, that could be your prerogative, or we could start with chapter seven. I do believe the first one that we continued was item 37, if my notes correct.
I believe that was also, let me just have a check, I believe that was the...
That was one of Andrew's, though. I just have hold on here as a note.
I can't remember if it was 35 or 37. Does anybody remember very specifically if we had, I circled 35 also, but I'm not sure if we solidified on 35. Does anybody remember from last time?
35, I have no written, I just have no written down, which means you guys would have said no, so.
Oh, you marked no on that? Okay. So if you had a chance to review, or if you at least, you know, went through and saw all the recommended changes, for the exceptions of the ones that we are going to discuss today, that we have some questions about for the planning commission that was here last meeting, we approved all the changes that we walked through on that, and then we have a couple that we wanted to just discuss primarily with Sandy and Kathy, because your comments were, you know, we're like, well, let's find out exactly what they had to say, because we might have made a decision that was contrary or not necessarily trying to get to the point y'all were making in your statements. Yes, go ahead.
It was my, I'm not sure if I got the numbers right here, but we had quite a discussion regarding sound and notification, and the lady who was county commissioner was talking about helicopters going up and down, and we talked about all the sound, you know, depending upon the surrounding terrain.
Right.
That it would be impacted differently if it were in a valley versus on a hilltop.
Right.
And so after much discussion, we agreed to wait until Kathy came back.
That's right. That way we could get some more input. You're talking about specifically 37, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Well, you know...
Go ahead.
If I may, I'd like to just provide a little context for my comment number 35. And I know this, if it's already rejected, why that's fine, but if you'll allow me, I'd just like to...
I have no problem with that. Anybody else have a problem with that? Because I marked that one as not decided, so if PJ marked no, and maybe I messed up, but...
You know, my idea was rather simple, really, because I looked at the title, you know, Pennington County supports the growth of existing industries. And, you know, tourism is covered pretty well, you know, agriculture, and then, you know, other kinds of economic development, but it struck me that one of them that's lacking is the development of natural resources. And it just, you know, we develop our natural, I mean, to me, the development of our natural resources, and the logical ones are, you know, logging and mining, but, you know, even agriculture is it, you know, developing natural resources. And so it just struck me, considering that title supports the growth of existing industries, the development of natural resources should be included, and it can be, and so I guess the focus of my comment really should be not the last part, you know, in an economically feasible and environmentally sustainable manner, but the first part, that it should allow for the development of these things as an existing industry. And I mean, and the reason I added the last part was because I know that there's a lot of controversy sometimes about these, these types of industries, and so, you know, I'm not proposing that we should create, you know, just a kind of carte blanche that these should happen. They still have to go through, you know, the permitting process to determine that, you know, it's environmentally sustainable and that, you know, the companies need to assure that they're economically feasible, but that's really not the focus of it. It's just really to add the development of natural resources to the list of existing
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't have any issues with the comment that Kathy has on that. I don't see, it's, it's just fine to me to be added.
Is it best to add it as a 4.6, because that's what it was kind of labeled as here? Because there's a 4.5 on that particular section, and it looks like you're suggesting to label it as 4.6?
Yeah, I was just thinking to add it as a, you know, and so it would, the way it's structured, it would require another one of those bullets, if you will.
Right.
ED four-point-six, but here again, I'm not really too fussy about how it gets added, um, as long as to me that concept should be included.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I think that it's appropriate, I, I almost feel like we should not get so specific and, and just remove such as logging and mining, um, and leave the rest. The county should allow for development of its natural resources in an economically feasible and environmentally sustainable manner.
That's fine. That's, to me, that, it, it, you know, creates the same, makes the same point.
Fair enough.
Question?
Yes.
Um, so with each one of these goals comes the icon for what part of the county? So is Black Hills Central or Eastern? And you can do all three, one of the three, would you recommend all three in that? If you look next to them, you can see the icons on your sheets.
Right.
I think all three.
All three are different, separate and unique.
Yeah, I'd- I figured it's where you'd go, but I wanted to-
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on that? Comments, concerns? All right. Um, mind you, the, the items that we've pegged to come back and have some more discussion with doesn't mean we can't come back to any of the other areas if y'all feel like on this, in this particular, um, section, just so that we can make sure we address any other concerns that those who weren't here might have had. Uh, next item was item thirty-seven, which was dealing with the air, uh, the airports, the helicopter. There was a lot of discussion on that, if you got a chance to-
I did listen to it.
-to see that, so we're just trying to figure out the, the best course for item thirty-seven, which is page four-five and ED five-point-two. Whether we should require disclosure statements, I thought we kind of, the group that was here, I think we kind of concluded should require, but I think there was a lot more discussion on that as well.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mark.
I believe the, uh, difficulty was that how far should this disclosure extend?
Right.
It was basically, it, the first property owner that develops the property or buys the property and builds the houses, and then after that, how do we continue to, uh, notify these folks that might come later to buy the house the second time around? Um, which is a que, good question. I mean, I don't know how you would go about doing that. I, I agree that the original purchaser or original developer should be notified, but I don't see any way that we can have a continuation of that notification, other than, that it's going to be in, possibly in the deed.
If it's put in there. It's actually a common problem that we run up against with a lot of new landowners, is they get the title search thinking they're getting all the information about that property, but they're really only getting half if that, because, you know, across the hall from registered deeds is our department with a whole other story of that property. So, and unless it is recorded registered deeds, it's not going to come up in a title search.
And can we make a ordinance or rule that says it's got to be recorded in the deed so that it's in perpetuity?
I don't know the answer to that. Um, we do do it for guesthouses, you have to pu, you have to, uh, file an affidavit about the guesthouses because they have early stick requirements. It's actually coming up also currently with some other, uh, land uses. Um, I think it actually came up with the Board of Commissioners as far as filing some things for, for Bussie's property and across the, the way, so, um, it might be the only way to do it.
Well, that'd be my suggestion. If that's a possibility, that would be what I would recommend, is that it's always disclosed in the deed.
Is that something we can do, or do we have to look at the, the legislature to see if it's, make it a requirement? I mean, or can we, do we have that carte blanche? Maybe I shouldn't say carte blanche, but have that capability to do that. Do you know, PJ?
What we do with that? Not, not, oops, sorry. Where, you, you stated we already do it with one? We do it with one. I'm not sure how widespread it can be, but definitely something that we would be in favor of and we can look into further.
Any further?
Yeah, I, I agree that that would be the best approach, and then we know that it's there and, um, will be retained. I guess I'd suggest that, I mean, if we could have you do a little more homework on that.
Sure.
But, you know, but then the other issue, and I think this was, it came up in your discussion last, two weeks ago, is that, you know, how large of the area does this encompass? You know, the, the, the circle around the, like, the airport and so on, and I don't think there you came, you really landed on anything either, did you?
We didn't land on a specific distance than, that I remember that we came up.
Could we not adopt the, uh, the, the contours provided by the FAA or whatever that noise boundary is there?
So, the only thing we have for a noise boundary is from Ellsworth. That's what those boundaries are right now, and if you look at it north of us, of course, is Meade, so there's not much in the county for noise, and then the other part falls in Box Elder. What you're seeing down here is not necessarily nor, noise contours for the regional airport, but kind of, um, reserved areas or special areas for the flight, for the-
For the flight approach.
Aircraft when they come in, crash zones and things like that.
Well, one option would be to take the Ellsworth noise and just do kind of a general extrapolation. Let's say how many feet out is, like, the, the first two noise, you know, I mean, just do kind of a general extrapolation and settle on something.
I did ask Patrick Dame, um, he is, I think, the assistant director over the airport. If they have any noise contours for the regional airport, I haven't heard back from him, because I know that would require a study, and I would also think possibly that the aircraft at the Air Force Base might be a little louder than commercial. I'm not sure, I'm just-
They are, especially when they use afterburners.
But I think that's why we don't have to necessarily go all the way out to the edge of the contours. We could just maybe take the, you know, the, the one, the first, the first concentric or the second one or something, and, I mean, I think this is something where it's not an exact science, and you can see there that there was a lot of variables because it's ragged and irregular and so on, so it's, it's just going to have to take some information and then a best judgment.
I, I would be in favor. We can't afford or we can't require, in my opinion, justifiably for each, uh, business that comes along that wants to fly a helicopter to-
Pay for that study.
Pay for a study like that. So, I think that if we were going to do something like this, it would be, um, I went up and, uh, looked around in the area that we're talking about there in Keystone, um, this past week, and I would say, and no helicopters were flying at the time, obviously, but if we were to go a quarter of a mile from the site, that, that's, uh, eight hundred and eighty yards, correct?
Roughly, roughly thirteen yards.
Four hundred and forty yards.
Yeah.
See, I was, I was thinking roughly in fifteen hundred feet area. That's kind of close. That's actually-
Right on.
Within the zone of what I was thinking.
So, if we were to do that, it's going to be more res, it, it's going to be less effective, maybe in some areas where, where the landscape is flat, but I think that that would very much cover areas such as that hel, helipad in Keystone, um, the helipad that's on the way to Custer, even though we're not, that's not in our area, but all of those areas are surrounded by, the helipads down in a valley and surrounded by mountains on either side or good-sized hills, anyway, depending on what you consider a mountain.
These are hills.
Anyway, I, I thought, I thought a quarter mile would be appropriate, that we, homeowners within a quarter mile or developers within a quarter mile.
You know, I tend to agree, something in that order is, is really the, I mean, we're, we're catching, you know, the most serious part of it with that, and I just would counsel us not to over, like you say, just establish something, not overthink this, and not, you know, just establishing a quarter mile or whatever it might be. I think that's the right approach.
Uh, excuse-
Go ahead, Sandy.
Mr. Chairman, and so you, you are suggesting that we have something recorded at the courthouse to the register of deeds within a quarter mile radius coming out from helicopters, airports, et cetera, so that if a person were to buy and get a title insurance policy and they were to read it, that they would then be made aware that it would be possible? Is that what you're suggesting?
Correct, that it would be possible, there's going to be helicopter noise or-
Yeah, okay.
Or whatever noise.
Yeah, for two twenty, number feet.
So would it be from the property, landing pad, runway? Um, I did up on the, the screen, if you look at the yellow, which is regional airport property, went out about a quarter mile, that's what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Oh.
I would, I would say, um, from the helipad itself.
Because that's the primary area it's going to be.
And for airports? We do have commercial and private airstrips in the county.
Then from the airstrip, wherever the, uh, center of the noise pollution begins, so that would be the runway, or I don't think it's necessary if they're pulling their airplane out of the hangar on a private strip and starting it up, that, you know, I think that for starters, the noise of a small private plane, when it's just sitting at the end of the runway is not that audible, um, for mayor, very much, but it's once they're wound up to take off that the, that they become audible for any distance.
So, the, the question would be, again, this doesn't take effect right now, but if we were to do this, whose responsibility would it be to record the document? So if a new, like, if a new airstrip comes in, then we can put it in as a requirement, and then would they then have to put that deed on each surrounding property within a quarter mile so it pulls up when they're searched?
So yours, are you, so let me see if I understand what you're asking. Are you asking if a new airport establishes itself or helipad establishes itself, then does that helipad have to then go to all the properties that meet that distance range and have it placed? Because in there, it's a cost incurred to them.
Sixty dollars a page. Well, one document, so it's going to be multiple, so I don't know exactly how you do it, it's going to be a minimum of sixty, because if you're researching a property that abuts the airport or an airstrip and you're only searching that property, the information for the other one's not going to come up.
I think that the, that the, uh, onus should lie upon the property developer, not the airport or the, I think the developer should be required.
To re, make sure that-
Right, he's the one selling the houses or the business or whatever that's going to be disturbed. He stands to gain from it, not the, not the airport, and if the, if somebody builds an airstrip, say out by scenic now, and nothing is developed there for fifteen years, why should he turn around and be penal, penalized that he built an airstrip there fifteen years later?
And had to put it on all the property, put it on the registered deeds.
This is new ones, not existing, is what we're looking for.
Correct.
Right, because if I build an airport or helipad out in the middle of nowhere and there's really nobody there, why should I have to put it on all their, their documents? It should be any developers that come in. That makes sense. I can agree with that. Any other?
But your question was the, how to handle the existing situations, right?
Well, both, um, because if you go into the existing, there's going to be a lot of people that'll have to do this.
Right.
But you, I guess you get those whenever they come through for a building permit or anything of that nature, right? I mean, it's not like we're gonna, are we gonna, do we just want to go and say, all right, now everybody has to go do this, or is it just, it's along that process when you come in, you want to do a building permit, you want to do a sell, or you want to do something whenever you're transactionally having-
I think that it should be just on new, so if somebody comes in and purchases a new house within that area, then at that point in time, the, it's got to be put on the deed.
And then running with the mindset, you're already here, so you already should know.
Right.
The ones that are currently there. Okay, that makes it simple. That does make it simple, I agree.
And not, not only when the house is put up, but I also went during the plating process as a requirement, when you're creating those lots too, because you could take a forty-acre lot and break it down into-
Yes.
Fifty of them.
Yeah, if we're, if, if it's going to lead to development of additional people being, residing there or operating a business there, then at that point in time, it should be noted.
It's going to sound like a nitpicky thing, but it comes up a lot, so not every property is completely covered in that quarter mile. Sometimes it even crosses a twenty-five percent of the property. Would that property then need to have it recorded?
So I think what we should say is because, pardon me.
Bless you.
If you have a piece of property and it's twenty-five acres, and your resident sits at the far northeast end, which is more than a quarter of a mile away from, I think it should be the residence or the business where the actual people are going to be.
Structures.
Structure.
Okay.
Not, not just the property, that would-
But I, I do think, though, we have to be a little careful, because, like, in the case of the, you know, the Keystone development there, um, those lots are rather small, and so even to me, if, even if a corner of one of those small lots is within the twelve-hundred feet, it should be noticed on that deed, even though the house might be, uh, you know, it-
Half a mile.
Well, or, no, it won't even be that.
Twelve hundred and sixty feet.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay.
And so I just think that in those small, you know, your example on the twenty-five acres is one thing, but, you know, these three-acre parcels, they're, I just think it has to be the, um, if the lot is with, if any portion of the lot is within the, the quarter mile, it needs to be on it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Sunny.
Is there any similar situations such as properties that are next to substations where notifications are required of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So this would be totally unique to have a disclosure on a title?
No, it was just done recently for the helipad down by, they'll say that they were discussing.
Okay, so there's, there's no other situation where neighboring properties or some kind of disclosure and different situations?
Except for guesthouses, no.
Guesthouses. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
How about we simply change it to should consider disclosure statements? I think this is a far more complicated issue than, I mean, just the way we're trying to work through this and we're finding all kinds of little pitfalls. Um, if we're going to do it and, and, and be effective with it, I, I think it's going to take a little more time and, uh, effort and consideration than perhaps we're at least currently, you know, in a, in a position to do. Plus, uh, you know, should require is, 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 is not, uh, exactly, uh, a, a demanding statement. It considers that you should do it, but we could change it even to should consider, um, disclosure statements. Uh, I think it would be constructive, just from the standpoint of protecting some consumer interests, that they are aware of the potential for this, and, uh, but I don't know if we can work this out, because we've had several people come up with ideas, and, um, I, I realize that even if we pass one of the ideas we have here, it's not necessarily going to see fruition by any means, but, um, I, I do think it's a little more complicated than maybe a fifteen-minute discussion can handle, so, even if we changed it to something even more, you know, creative.
I think we have, I think I just thought of the solution to Kathy's concern. Um, they may buy the piece of property but not build on it, but then when they, when they're ready to build on it, they have to come for the building permit. The building permit shows on the property where they're going to build the structure. Uh, when they, so when they come for the building permit, they're going to get that, at that time, we'd know where the structure's going to be, and therefore we would have to require that on the deed.
But what if I buy it as blank land? I'm not going to see that. And then as I go get my building permit, then I might be like, oh, that's where I wanted to build my house, now I'm not going to build it.
Well-
Because, you know what I mean?
You still could.
Well, you could, yeah, but, but now I'm like, oh, well, now I'm really limited on where I'm going to build on my own land, because now I might have my-
How's it going to limit you?
Well, if I bought land and didn't know as I'm buying land.
Okay.
Right? And so let's just say, because there's no structure on there, um, now I go to put a structure on there, now I, now, now I see that it's where the contours are, now it's like, oh, but I bought this not knowing that the contours were there or the, or the, the distance was there. Does that make sense? Because if I understand the way you were saying it, it's like, it only needs to be on there if there's structures. Well, if there's no structures, then am I going to know that I'm within that, if I buy that?
Buy that actual piece of property? No, you're not going to know.
Right.
But you're, but once you go in to, uh, purchase your building permit, then you'll be aware of that there's an airstrip, helipad, airport within a quarter of a mile of that spot where you want to put your house, and then it's up to you whether you want to put your house there or not, knowing that in the future, that particular house title is going to have that stipulation on there from that point forward.
Okay, so let me just clarify. If my piece of property, all of it, has no structure and it's all within that fifteen-hundred feet or whatever, uh, that we decide- Does it still have to be disclosed on the deed at that point?
If the whole property is in there?
Mm-hmm. See where I'm getting at this? Because I could buy a piece of property and not see it because there's no structures, but the moment there's a structure on it, that now it has to be on there. I think we're not doing the individual service if we're keeping it from them until they purchase a property and then they wanna build. You see what I'm saying? Unless I've misunderstood what, how we're, how we're walking through this. So the whole purpose of this is to give those who are buying property in the area, at least a heads up that there is this. Teleport, airport or whatever. Because I sure would be a little upset if I spent eighty thousand dollars and bought an acre of land and then I'm gonna go build a house on it. And I, now I find out that it's right, my whole entire property is in this noise contour that maybe I was hoping I was gonna have just a whole bunch of birds out in my backyard. You know what I mean? I mean, again, I still feel like the consumer should be out there researching it. However, if we're wanting it to be noticed in the deed or something, it needs to be added earlier than when you go get your building permit.
I, I don't know why it can't be on raw land, that a portion of this property falls within, you know, a, a noise contour, period. And at least alert the consumer to say, oh, well, maybe I'll, I'll look into this and where can I situate a house if I'm gonna do that at some point in the future?
So just a reminder, the, the comprehensive plan is more of a general document. And the nuts and bolts of doing this will come with the zoning orders, but it's valuable to staff to know what the intent is behind it, so.
Right. You get the intent?
Huh?
Are you aware of the intent yet?
I think so.
I, I do think it should be individual situations. I think Jim pointed out, you know, the county should consider disclosure. Because I think there's gonna be a lot of situations, there's gonna be like, oh, this is easy. And then there's gonna be other ones that the planning and zoning staff are gonna be like, hmm, this raises a flag. Let's give it to the, we don't know how to do this, you guys, we'll let y'all make the decision and get yelled at.
There you go. I think that, yeah, I mean, should is fine with me.
Should consider?
Yeah.
I, I do think that's a wise change to be made, should consider.
All that, and we got should consider. Awesome. Be considered May.
But it was great conversation. They're just putting it back to should, because I had, last meeting you changed it to May.
Well, we changed it to May and then I thought we crossed it out and put should, because I've got, I crossed out should, then I put May, and then I crossed out May and then I put should. So it's gonna be should instead of require, should consider.
Should've put should.
Should've put should. But it should say should consider rather than should require.
Okay.
If I, if I, if I, if I'm understanding correct, that's what we ended up with.
Well, I'll hold off on my, I'll play devil's advocate with you question. Let's just move forward with this.
Great. Sandy, did you have a question?
I have a two o'clock meeting.
Oh, you have a two o'clock meeting? We're not even at ten o'clock yet.
Okay.
I know.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Sonny.
I agree with that, but I wanted to ask a couple of questions. There, is there, PJ, is there any map that shows where private helipads and airports are?
No.
Didn't think so. And how about zonings, can they be zoned in any zoning?
Uh, pretty much, yeah, with conditional use permits usually for a private landing strip.
Has it ever been considered if these should have a special zoning or fall into a specific zoning?
It hasn't. A lot of them are more of a seasonal use or just for like when they come in for vacations and stuff like that. The only one that had the regular use was down on Powell's property and that was for banners for airplane advertising during the summer, but don't even know how often that was used.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking if, if there was zoning for these, that could make this a little easier, maybe, just a thought.
Any further comments on this? You wanna bring the devil's advocate up?
No.
Fair enough. The next item I have on there, item forty-one.
I have thirty-eight.
You have thirty-eight? Okay.
That was for Sandy.
I think it's fine.
Does, does anyone have any questions, concerns with thirty-eight?
I mean, that's covered in all of the other discussions.
Okay. So which is the next one you have, PJ?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Oh, the statement with specificity.
Let me just go, go to that page, page five dash four. Five dash four. Oh, and now it's just, if you read it the way it is, this is two point two. Yeah, the county should ensure that high impact agricultural processes such as timber production have low impacts on surrounding sensitive land uses such as residential. Well, it just occurred to me that the county doesn't really have much control over timber production because the Forest Service handles that. So I, I didn't really see any mechanism for the county to, to, to take this action. Because unless I'm mistaken, the Forest Service doesn't really consult with the county when they give logging permits and say. You can build this amount of much of road and you can take out this amount of timber and you have to do it during this season and so on, do they?
Not so much with our office. We do have some private landowners that do, do timber. Not many.
Not many, no. The bulk of it is on, is on federal land. And so that's what, that was my comment, just really, I just really didn't see a way of doing this. And now the, this, at the. So the, on this, on this response area, the, the underlined was the suggestions by Matrix to, to do this. So they, they suggested specifying on private lands. And then, then they addressed for timber production on federal lands, the county should work with the Forest Service to define concerns the county would like addressed with permits or permit renewals, which I'm fine with. So.
We already do that.
What's that?
Yeah. When we go to the Forest Service Board meetings, the county commissioners. If we see something that concerns us, we bring it up.
So I, I think their response, Matrix's response over here on the, on the right is certainly addresses the concern that I initially had.
Do they seem to listen to you, Mark, whenever they, if the county has an issue? Or have you even encountered any of that?
I mean, we've, I think we've encountered it a couple of times. I wasn't on the Forest Service Board at the time, but I think that they listen to us. Yeah, I do. I think they wanna work with us.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Obviously, we don't have any control over, you know, because you're right, I think most of it is federal and land that's being involved. But where we put residential housing developments might be rather critical if you're going to have frequent and. At some, sometimes distracting loud, you know, development or logging operations nearby. So I, it seems to me like a, a normal thing to be alert to the, the notion that those are not necessarily compatible side by side. And that there may be times where buffer zones may be considered or at least proposed. And, but I think it's true that the whole notion that we have any powerful and meaningful control over logging operations per se. Is probably not that appropriate, but.
But you know, and I don't doubt disagree at all, but you know, the, the real situation out there is that a lot of the private development in the Black Hills is on those old mining claims. And in general, they are surrounded by Forest Service. And so to say that there shouldn't be residential development on those old mining claims which are privately held now. Because the area around them might be logged at some point. I mean, you can't say, so.
No, and I, I think most of those are, you know, individual homes, those, that somebody goes out and buys a piece of property and is gonna put up a home. I, I was thinking in terms of if somebody decided to put in a significant development in an area that was going to be repeatedly ravaged by. You know, harvesting equipment for logging and so forth. That, that would be, but I think you're right, the individual who goes into the hills and wants a vacation home, he takes a certain risk.
I mean, not just a vacation home, but, but, I mean, that's what the bulk of the people that live out there.
Yeah.
There are the old mining claims that have become private, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
One thing to keep in consideration here is that logging operations are temporary.
Yeah.
That, once they've logged, they move on. So you're usually not gonna be dealing with a lot of noise pollution and congestion and that kinda, you know, equipment. For more than probably three to six months. And then they're gonna be moving on somewhere else.
Speaking from experience, that's absolutely true. What you do live with for a few more years are the weeds. You know, the weeds come off any time that disturbance is and the Forest Service isn't great about spraying. And so it's, that's the problem that people that live out there deal with after these things for, you know, multiple years. But nonetheless, I mean, I, but I think that, I mean, this is the comprehensive plan, it is general. You know, I, I think, I guess I'd like to see it added, just like they've reworded it here, to add a little more, you know, specific specificity between the private lands and then working with the county. Or working with the Forest Service on the, I don't, I see, that's okay, unless, I mean, is there some concern that we should just not have anything? I mean, the statement's already in there. It's five dash four. And so either I think the statement needs to get taken out or it needs to be revised a little bit to add this level of specificity.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Sonny.
The way Ag two point two reads is such as timber production, it's just an example. If we scratched that section entirely, it would just read, ensure that high impact agricultural processes have low impacts. Maybe this, this doesn't actually have anything to do specifically with timber, it's just an example. If you wanna put something regarding timber, maybe it should be Ag three, two point four or something like that, just a separate line.
Any thoughts?
I like your recommendation.
So remove and such as timber production and leaving the rest of two point two alone. Is that what I understood, Sonny?
Correct.
I agree. That sounds pretty good.
I'm also somewhat concerned about the word ensure because of the lack of control we have.
Yeah.
You know, encourage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Because if you ensure, that's obligating funds.
It's correct.
It's correct. So what, what would you like to put on there, Mark?
I would remove ensure and put encourage.
Anybody have any?
No, that's fine with me.
Sounds good.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner, are we still gonna add in what's recommended for Matrix is on private lands? But still take out what Commissioner Rivers is saying?
There's no point in saying on anything other than private lands because then we literally have no control.
Okay, so do we need it in there? No, because it's already kind of implied by the statement. Any other thoughts on this? Are we gonna add that for timber production? Are we gonna add that in there anywhere at all? Or are we just gonna let that be? That whole statement on the right hand side from.
No, I think that we just remove such as timber production and change the word ensure, leave it like it is.
Everyone agree on that? Okay, sounds good to me. Um, next one that you had, PJ?
I had forty-six, but did you have one before that?
Well, I thought.
Didn't you say you had forty-one?
I thought forty-one because we were talking about fast tracking. But did we just say no to that because we, we talked about it and what, what the intent was?
I think we just said no to that.
And, yeah, forty-one and forty-two, I have no's and deletes.
Unless Kathy would like to.
Let me just, I'll just read and read it, it's five, one dash three. Well, I guess, I guess what caused me a little pause on this one is that it should support accelerated development of high value food processing industry through accelerated permitting processing. Well, with, we don't, right now, I'm not aware that there's even a process for accelerated permitting process. So I, we just can't, it, it seems so arbitrary that all of a sudden we're gonna take a permitting process and decide that because it's, it's a high value food. We can skip this step or, or change this or so on. And there's no, as far as I know, there's no process to support the accelerated permitting. So to me, we need a first step and that is to figure out what that's gonna look like.
What we ended up changing this to, I don't know if you were able to see or if you got to catch it all, but we changed this wording in Ag one point three, I believe. To the county shall support the development of high value added food processing industries through the permitted process.
There you go. That's fine. That's fine with me too. Because then if there needs to be.
Is that what the note you had, PJ?
If there needs to be a process developed to, you know, support a fast track, then that, to me, that covers it, so that's good.
And then we removed the reference to Senate Bill sixty-six, because Senate Bill sixty-six could be any of the Senate bills.
Exactly right, so, of any year, so.
Of any year.
Without the year, so to me, that's just putting the context in as the way to do that, so.
Yep. Then forty-six, is that the next one you've got, PJ?
Yes, sir.
All right, forty-six, this is Sandy's, but there's a lot of discussion about bike paths.
So we're in the chapter six now.
Oh, chapter six, ten. Does anybody have anything in five that they would like to address previously? Okay, so chapter six, you're correct, PJ. So six, ten, we were talking about bike paths.
Yeah.
That was a good conversation.
Yeah, but I thought at the end we concluded that my understanding of the terminology was, was different than the intent. I thought it was saying we had to have mandatory bike paths, I mean, to a certain extent. Whereas, I'll have to find it in here. It talked about bike routes.
Right.
The word routes came up instead of like bike path.
And I think I'm, I have on here a, a note where I marked out create a bicycle route and we put designate, service to designate a bicycle route. Rather than rebuilding, obligating funds.
Yeah.
It's more of designating a route so that people are aware of it.
Yeah, I was fine with the manner in which our conversation ended.
Okay.
I, I have for forty-six, forty-seven and forty-eight, because they're somewhat related, I'll come back to all of them.
Okay. With forty-six, does anyone have any issues with that? Because, oh yeah, I guess they're all linked in here, aren't they, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight? Those are Kathy's example of when should is too prescriptive.
So how did that, did, have you discussed, you discussed this already?
We discussed it in general. We didn't come to a conclusion of accepting anything on that yet. The only thing that we, that I have a note of is that we actually, we did talk about it shouldn't be the county creating new, as in developing, you know, funding and building. But at least designating bike routes.
Well, that's okay with me to designate, then it, I mean, it's just.
If you're going to designate them, they better be, you know.
Appropriate.
Appropriate so you can travel on them. I mean, simply putting a sign down there saying, going down this way, that's the bike path. And if you don't develop it, then it's kinda pointless.
Right, but, but bike paths can be designated on already paved roads, so.
Well, if you're talking about that, but that, that also implies maybe bike lanes, which, because that's the only safe way really to travel on a designated highway on a bike. But I, I don't think we were talking about that.
That's correct, we weren't.
So.
Mr. Chair.
Anyway.
Hold on, I think Commissioner DeSanto had.
I'd, I'd like to give you two examples of where the counties that I lived in benefited tremendously from development of bike paths. One was in Spokane, Washington. They created a twenty-five mile path between Spokane and Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. The corridor that that bike path was built upon, the real estate, the property values of those homes, it was also called a greenway. The property values of, of those homes increased by twenty percent because that bike path went behind their neighborhood. And was easily accessible from their neighborhood. Families see that as a, a very handy option for going and spending family time and that kinda stuff. The other area where this took place was a long, long time ago, where they told, I, I had a duplex in Milpitas, California. And they had a road called Calabaros Road that connected. in Milpitas, California, and they had a road called Calaveras Road that connected Highway eight-eighty to Highway two-eighty about, I think, four and a half miles. When they chose to tear out Calaveras Boulevard and turn it into a greenway bike path, my property value went up by at least twenty-five, possibly even more than that over, over a period of time. Not only did it eliminate through traffic, but would, that's kind of neither here nor there. But I guess what I'm pointing out is, is that we make our funds from property taxes. If we increase property values by building a bike path, it's going to pay for itself. That's just my thought I'm holding.
Well, if I may-
Sonny, does yours kind of run on that same line?
I think the discussion on bike paths is, is a good one, but I just wanted to point out, I don't think this is about bike paths. I don't think bike paths are actually specifically mentioned here in TC two. But the word create might have, I think, is what instigated the idea that we're talking about building something. But when we changed create to designate and designate and distinguish between bicycle route and bicycle path, I think our conversations are getting a little convoluted.
Correct.
I agree. But you know, you know, my original comment wasn't really to, to weigh in on the merits of a bike path or how long it should be or where it should be or something. I just wanted to be, I want my suggestion to, to create something like should examine the feasibility of would just be to kind of start this discussion about where it makes sense, where there are some existing roads that might be utilized, where there's some property values that might really benefit from it. I mean, just to me would be to, rather than make it so prescriptive about the outcome, just start the, the conversation and the process to see where the outcome kind of ends up.
I like that word feasibility. I don't have an issue with that at all.
No. And again, this is a generic overview document. It's not saying that we're going to do it.
It's just a directive.
It's a direct, huh?
Isn't it kind of a directive as to where we want to go?
And I guess maybe I do see the, the aspect of, I understand what you're saying about increasing property values. But saying designate here doesn't eliminate the possibility of the county saying, well, we're still going to develop one too. Designate can designate them and if you see increased usage or individuals saying, hey, can we, you know, the, the public coming in saying, hey, this is a great path. It's, you know, whatever the case may be. Can we get it where we get the road expanded or whatever the case may be for a back, a bike lane? I mean, because like Jim talks about is sometimes you got to see is the route even viable. I, I know in Arizona, I lived in Arizona for a little while. There's a lot of bike lanes in Arizona, but a lot of those didn't come into effect until after they were designated routes. And they saw the travel and then they like, okay, there's a lot of bike travel. Now we got to widen the road so we can meet the need.
Yeah, but my concern with that and, and I certainly, the concept is, is fine, but when you, you, you're presupposing an outcome when you say we should designate a route because you're already saying this is where we need to end up. Whereas I, I think this is such a new conversation and there's so many, you know, the, the county is very diverse and there's a lot of empty space and there's a lot of mountains and hills. I, I just think we should certainly, I'm encouraging to start this process, but not pre-dis, presuppose where it'll end up.
Gotcha.
My point.
So what do we want it to say?
Well, I suggest we just say we'll examine the feasibility of doing these things.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean.
I agree.
I like Kathy's statements that she has written in her comments.
Is there anywhere else in this that we're examining feasibility of things?
You mean in the entire package?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think.
There will, yeah.
There is? Okay, so that wouldn't be unique. No.
I, I'm a little frustrated by this word should. And the reason is it sounds like this is what we're going to do, but if we really want a prescription, it would be shall. And we shall do this. We shall do that. The should is to me a, a goal. Now, I grant you that bike paths probably are feasible in the Black Hills and these areas that are suggested. But, so I'm not opposed to the use of feasibility, but I think we shouldn't be so frightened of the word should, which is simply establishing a goal. Is it a worthy goal? Now, we may not obtain it.
Right.
We are not going to be penalized if we don't. Now, if we said shall and then at the end of this period of time, somebody comes in and said, look, you people did none of those things. Well, no, we didn't.
But keep in mind that that, those words are defined in here, page one dash six, the shall and the should. And, and so you're right, what it says, but shall, each policy includes the term shall, which provides specific and certain guidance for development, or should, which signifies a less rigid directive. That's what it says.
And, and, yeah, and.
But you know, and, and I was thinking about this after, I, I missed last time, but the time before. I also noticed in here, and now I really am jumping back. I'm sorry. I apologize. But if some of these say will, and so then if that's, if there's a will, then will should be described in, defined in this paragraph also.
Will and shall, I believe, would, would be described, described the same way.
Yeah.
It could be, but I think since will is used in some of these goals.
I agree. It should be described.
It should be in that paragraph. Yeah. And if I can, I, I don't know if I can find one right now, but I know at least with the current wording, I found a couple wills.
And then all the goals from the different chapters are put into chapter eleven with short-term, midterm, long-term expectations.
Like right here, I found one. Ag one dash, one point twelve, the county will support. So there are a few wills and so I'm just thinking will needs to be put in that paragraph on the bottom of one dash six.
And the other thing about TC two is it's not just about recreational bike paths or for leisure activities. It's also for alternative transportation to work.
Yeah, I understand that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Sonny.
Here in TC two, are we thinking now about adding a two-point-four to, in regard to bike paths? Because again, bike routes, as mentioned earlier, is something different. Or are we talking about changing bike routes on TC two or what was that TC two-point-one? To talk about paths instead of routes?
Well.
A little bit confused because it says routes and we're talking about paths and they're not the same thing.
Right. I've-
It sounds like we need to add a two-point-four if we want to talk about paths.
I don't think this document should be reviewing paths.
That encompassing.
I think that's like, I think path is like specific, like this is exactly where it's going. This is what we're doing. And I think this is just saying we're going to take a look at the, and the feasibility of the routes to get there.
That's what I think.
I think routes are very simple. They're just a way to say if you're going to bike through the hills, here's the route to take. And we've changed create to designate. Is there anything else that we're actually changing here?
Uh, we're changing them to say should examine the feasibility of.
Where was that to be?
Yeah, I want to know exactly what we're thinking about the wording on these.
Wasn't it items forty-seven and forty-eight that took, took care of the language in TC two-point-one and two-point-two?
The county, so if we read two-point-one, the way this is at, and you can tell me if I'm reading it wrong. The county should examine the feasibility of, and then what's the next word? Work with, yeah, because that doesn't make sense. That's what I want.
Should examine the feasibility of a bicycle route connecting da, 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 as a long-term project.
I agree. Yeah, that's good.
Chair, are, are we talking about bike paths as a recreational pursuit? Because that would actually be better in, in chapter eight under recreation, open space and tourism. If you want to add a new section, because I believe TC two is more about transportation, not necessarily.
Which is a bike route.
Not a path.
Right.
That's true.
Right. It's a route.
So yeah, change that. Make it route, a bike route.
Let's forget about paths until we get to section eight.
It may just add it into eight as a separate section. Just my thought.
But on two-point-two, the way I read it, it's nothing about a physical trail. It's about a program to promote bicycling. That's what this two-point said, promote.
That does, yeah.
And the, to support the path that gets built up above. I mean, not a little bit.
The designation of a path.
Yeah, the designation.
Of a route, not a path, a route.
But I mean, I think so, two-point-two, the way it is, it's do you start a bicycle advocacy program? And, and I mean, that may be a good thing. I don't know. But here again, I think rather than saying, yes, we should, let's just examine it and see if we should. I, I don't really know.
Like they have in major cities where you can rent the bikes on the different corners and then return them to different parts of the?
Well, yeah, I don't know. Or I mean, because that's what this is. It's promoting the advocacy. I mean, maybe we're going to try to encourage people that live in, in, you know, along, you know, some out in the county, some to commute to Rapid City for work. Well, I think that's a tough haul because it's downhill one way and up the other. You know, I just, I just think this is, maybe, maybe you can get people that live out in Rapid Valley and, you know, where you live. You could, you could bike to work.
That's a long bike.
That's a long haul. So I just think that this needs to have a little discussion to say, you know, doesn't make sense to promote bicycling to work in the county, not the city, but in the county.
Or maybe in that central part of the county around the city, which is that it's going to have a higher.
And that's right.
Well, aren't those the things you find out when you decide to develop an advocacy program? And you say, it isn't really very practical to, to promote bicycling routes, et cetera, in this area, but it would make sense here. And it seems to me that an advocacy program would be sensible and, and, and directed in those areas where it would be efficacious, I would think. You know, it's not, it's not like we're, we're all going to have to bicycle to work or something. I, and once again, I, I, I think it's a desirable goal, even though we, if we never do it, it, it is a desirable goal and should to me is, is a, a word that says, we feel strongly about this and, you know, we want to advocate for it if nothing else. So I, I, I guess I'm not so fearful that the county commission is going to appropriate lots of money for an advocacy program. But it seems to me to be something that's in any kind of developing suburban, urban area. But that's.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to see-
I don't even bicycle anymore.
I don't think you're going to see any of this in the next ten years. So is it something that you want to do in the next twenty possibly? As a county.
Did we come to a conclusion on two-point-one? So let's come to a conclusion on two-point-one. Can we do that? And, and I think the county should, should examine the feasibility of a bike route or of bike routes as a long-term project. I think of bike routes.
Yeah, that, that's fine. That's good.
And it could be a path.
That would be part of the path. Right.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be a path. Yeah. But it, as TJ pointed out, this is not necessarily specifically for leisure and entertainment, but also to provide the safety measures for people who choose to, by their own volition, commute to work on a bicycle.
Okay, I'm good with that. Anybody else?
Was that just two-one?
Two-point-one. So we also got to finalize on two-point-two.
Right.
Promote the, should evaluate the feasibility of developing a program to promote a bicycle advocacy program.
I will agree. That's awkward language, but I just, I guess I, I mean, I don't, regardless of how should is defined here, that it's less of a rigid directive. It's still a directive that we should promote bicycle advocacy program. And I guess I'm not convinced that, that.
We should be doing that.
I, I think one thing that strikes me is I'm not so sure that there's a great groundswell in Rapid City like there might be someplace else, like in California or Spokane for a bicycle program. And it might seem quite embarrassing if we say we should do this and we discover that nobody really gives a damn about bicycle programs. And so in some respects, I, I do feel that a little bit, you know, that it has to be, for myself and, and for my own kind of interpretation of the importance of, to me, this bicycling thing is, is seminal to the very idea of Rapid City becoming a, a, a larger urban area in, in Pennington County. Because who uses bicycle, bicycle paths? Young people. And what is the essence of a strong, growing economy in this world? Young people. And we live in a part of the world which doesn't have lots of young people. We really don't. We, 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 demographically, we're an old place. And so that strikes me and yet I don't want to start, you know, talking about something that I know we're not going to do. And, and I have to admit that it rings a little hollow in my ear for Rapid City. Boulder, Colorado? Yeah, maybe so, but those are different, different parts of the world. So I, I, but I, I do feel that someday we, we ought to consider these kinds of.
Well, so how about as a, you said the word, how about the county should consider a bicycle advocacy program rather than promote?
And I'll be, I'll be comfortable with that, but I, I.
And I will too.
I second that. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Here we go.
Just another couple of addendums maybe on two-point-two. The word daily in here, I don't know if that's really needed. A viable form of transportation is sufficient in my mind. And also, and recreation, I don't think recreation is applicable to this section. We're talking just about transportation, not recreation. So in other words, I would say we could scratch daily and scratch and recreation and really get to the core of this, the intent on this one.
Any thoughts on that? No.
My view is I agree with, with Sonny that daily is, doesn't need to be in there. But I don't see the harm of adding, keeping recreation because if we create this network, it can be used for either and so that, I don't really understand.
I said that because recreation is in another section.
Oh, okay. Well, then maybe it should be, so.
So we can bring this up again in section eight.
Fair enough.
Oh, good.
I'm good with that.
That was great, Sandy. I love it. It was awesome.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that too.
With that too.
Mr. Chair, looks like Mr. Nibel is coming today. Is this, do you want to table this discussion here if he has anything to say or continue on?
For the membership, would we like to table our discussion currently and go back to item, is that thirteen?
Eleven.
Eleven. Since the applicant is here. That's the one that has the, the property with all the stability issues.
Let's table, table this discussion.
Okay, I entertain a motion to.
It's removed.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no. We've tabled our current discussion and now we need a motion to reconsider or discuss item number eleven.
Motion to rediscuss, to bring into discussion item number eleven.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number eleven.
I don't know what we had to talk about today concerning this. I, I tried to contact Davis Engineering this morning who's working on my plan, but he wasn't available. I thought this meeting was tomorrow. I completely, I mean, I, I thought I had it today to get ahold of him and find out about that. I didn't realize it was today. I thought it was on the twenty-sixth is all.
All right. So where are you left in the thought process of what's going on with your property?
Well, I've got Davis Engineering working on a site plan for where I need to put retaining walls and how to, how to move forward, I guess, is all I, is where I'm at now. I put up the silt fence that they requested and I'm just waiting for him, I guess, to get me a plan and waiting for the ground to thaw out. I'm not planning to do anything until the ground thaws and we're done with all the snow, so.
Have you talked to staff to see any of the specific added requirements from what you've already put up? And how effective your current mitigation aspects are?
No, I haven't heard anything from anybody, so I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody about it. I just had left everything because I wasn't going to plan to do anything until the ground had thawed out, until the weather gotten better, so.
Okay. Any questions for?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I didn't hear your name. Are you the owner of record?
Yes, Bradley Nibel. Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
That's what I suggest you would do, Brad, is, is quickly as possible, get together with the planning department and find out what is needed to, it, it appears to me that the mitigation that you put forth already is not doing the trick. And further mitigation is necessary. So you need to get together with the planning department and get that figured out and taken care of as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Um, how long do you feel that you'll need for Davis Engineering to come up with your engineering plans for?
Um, I, I think he would probably have it done, but I, I never had, got a chance to contact him because like I said, I thought this meeting was until tomorrow and.
Okay.
Cause most of the stuff when I go there, he's got it done before I call him and ask him for it, so.
So if you could move forward with that as well and keep in communication with the planning department as far as. When you get your engineering plans, could you let them see those so that they?
Did they mention, do you guys, what wasn't, wasn't good enough there, as far as what wasn't getting it done?
Well. Brittany.
Cory, I think Cory did that one, right?
Oh, okay, Cory, sorry.
Uh, Cody, Cody, environmental planner. Um, so your silt fence is not pulled tight anymore. Um, you can't really see it in this picture, but I do have another picture I can show you upstairs. Uh, there's sediment in the road ditch now. Um, that's all sedimented in. If you look at. So this wasn't explained, I guess, up there. This is, these are pictures of either side of the applicant's property. Um, as you can see, the road ditch, there's no sediment or anything in the road ditch, so you. There, that's not coming from anywhere else besides the property. Up top here is, is completely exposed. Your straw mat, I mean, there's silt coming over your straw mat. There's nothing to prevent anything up top from. Going down. And then your straw mats in this south, southwest corner are being, are torn up. And then, on this very. So on this far side here, on the very east side of the property, um, the fence needs to be pulled up more as a J-hook, otherwise. Sediment will just run off and run, run down, so it just needs like another post that's farther up to pull. To pull that up.
Okay, well, I went, I went past where the dirt was exposed there, but.
Yeah, you'll still wanna, you'll still wanna pull it up, cause if, if you get extremely, you know, it's getting into April, and we're gonna get. Rain, um, in a high water event, that'll just come down and just go around it.
Okay.
So it just needs to be pulled.
This, the silt where it was running down over the, the straw mats is over, is over here. Over on this end, that is, that's all coming from up on the property above there, that water. Which is not, I'm not blaming them, it's not their fault, but the, the rain gutters from their entire back of their house and their deck. Come right down there in one spot. And I went up there the other day and took a look and took some pictures. And up on their property, you can see where it's washed on their property too, where the water's coming under the fence. So, and then, you know, it rains, so it's gonna come down the hill, so I'm not blaming them for it, but. I didn't, you know, this silt coming down there like that, there wouldn't have been that much water had it not been for those rain gutters draining down in that area. So, but I'll do whatever's needed to do to. Maybe put a wattle up here on top where this basement flat is, to try to slow that down. But most of that, like I say, is coming from way up on that other property on top of the hill. So, I went and looked after I seen what was going on. The silt fence, I have repaired it, you know, so it's all up straight, uptight, but. The hook on the end, I'll just have to put one more post there on the end, I guess.
Any further questions or for staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I would just encourage you to work with staff to get this resolved. What was discussed earlier was that, um, this has. Been kind of an ongoing thing. Um, you were, you were out of town, you were supposed to have somebody there to be responsible. There's. Um, the, from the county's position or maybe from my position, I just don't want this to affect some of the neighbors in, in a negative light. You know what I'm saying? Uh, it, uh, it, we, we can't afford to have this affect other people, uh, essentially, so. Please continue to work with staff, um, to mitigate, uh, the concerns with the stabilization on the site, uh, as, as soon as possible.
Okay.
And I would, I would push whoever is doing the engineering for you to get that done and get it to the staff as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
As soon as possible. Any further comments or questions for staff on this item?
No.
All right, then I would entertain a motion for, for item number eleven, if there's nothing further. From staff, nothing from staff.
The. We've already continued it.
So since we've continued it, we don't have to readdress that then?
Readdress.
Okay, so then, we don't table it again then. We just move on to the, back to our discussion.
Untable thirteen.
Untable thirteen. So I'd entertain a motion to untable item thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Commissioners, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. All right, quick, back to where we were at, um, solidifying TC two point two. If I remember correctly, the wording. Or did we finalize that?
We agreed, we finalized that, we moved on.
All right, so then that would push us to item five point one on page six eleven, six dash eleven. Yes, this was a, for discussion with PC. It looks like we passed that one or we agreed to it. County should consider.
Number forty-nine?
Forty-nine?
Yeah, you guys said yes to that. I have may circled, but no notes with that. And then that's also the last one you guys did the other day. Last meeting.
Does anybody have anything specific on that one?
What are we on exactly?
Item number forty-nine, which is TC five point one.
Right here, okay. Scenic byways, huh? Scenic.
Yeah, I mean, my point was just that I just thought it was a little too prescriptive and changed the wordage to.
Oh, the shall versus should consider?
Really my, you know, my point. And there, it seems like here. The county should consider rather than shall. And then in the last paragraph, please change, this will include the following, to this may include the following, let's see. Um, oh, I see the last sentence. I mean, this may, yeah, so. I don't care, I mean, it's just.
I believe they said yes to that.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's what we agreed on.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Moving on.
So then any other concerns with chapter six before moving on to seven? All right, item number seven.
Chapter seven.
Chapter, chapter seven. I don't know why I said item. Uh, the first one in here is item number fifty. Do we agree with that change to be made, seven dash one?
Did you go over seven before?
Nope, this is brand new.
This is brand new, rolling into seven.
All right. Seven, eight, and nine were the goals for today. Hey, okay. Okay, so I just, seven is just. Making the geology discussion there a bit more accurate, is what, is all it was. And, um. I don't have to read here, but, um. So, let me see. Most of Pennington County is underland by one or more aquifers. Okay, that's true. Except for the crystalline core up in the Black Hills, there's no aquifers up there. You have to find. Fractures and cracks and so on. And so I just thought that it should be, to be accurate, to say all but the crystalline core of the Black Hills. Is underland by aquifers and so on. And then, then it, then the, and, and the. The maps show where that core is, and I just added that sentence. So, it's just to me, be a little bit more accurate.
And I believe the consultants agree with you, cause they recommend them changing it.
Yeah, so, that's all that was.
I agree. Anyone else?
Sounds good.
All right, item, or page seven dash two.
And I, somehow or another, when I was looking at this, I didn't see or find those goals or. There was just something a little bit odd in how my book was put together, but that's, that was just my confusion, so there's nothing there.
Okay. Uh, is pay, any, anything up to you, page seven point five? That is a concern for anyone? If not, let's go ahead and then, item fifty-two, seven point five.
And here again, it was just for accuracy, because right now we really don't have two libraries. We have one library and then the branch of General Beetle. And so I just pointed that out and, and, um. They're gonna modify and say there's, well, it's not quite right. We don't have two branches. We have a main and a branch, but anyway, I think they get the point.
Main and a branch, yep. Any other input? If not, that takes us to seven six. Looks like the, the, this is a request to change to be made. Does anyone have any comments or concerns with seven six? PFS one point two.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Sunny?
I'm not sure about the buffered, but I think, I think Kathy had a comment about that. There was something else I wanted to change, however. We have here listed from high pollution sources such as mining and other heavy industrial activities. I think we should be including agriculture in this as well, so that it could read high pollution sources. Including agriculture, mining, and other heavy industrial activities.
I agree.
And one more thing is, I don't know if, if heavy is necessary. Shouldn't it include all industrial activities?
Can I? Well, why would it not be appropriate just to say the county should require wells and water sources to be buffered from high pollution sources? And it covers everything, because if we distinguish out and we don't capture something.
True.
Um, then, you know, maybe it's not looked at. I think it should be all sources. I mean.
Yeah, that's fully encompassing there, that.
It does.
I agree. That's good.
I agree with that too.
Yeah, I think the word buffer is, is the wrong word. I, I just think it should. I mean, my, my recommended language was the county should require reasonable assurance that wells and water sources are not impacted. From high pollution sources. And I find it to end the sentence after sources and not specify. But I think it's, buffering is a little.
I agree with your comments, Kathy.
And I also agree that, uh, we should just end it at high pollution sources, period.
So reasonable assurance rather than buffered?
Right.
Any other thoughts?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it too. Any other statements on that one? Are we good with the, the changes that we just?
So, so how did that one come out?
The county, um, the county should require reasonable assurance that wells and water sources are not. Impacted from high pollution sources, is what it'll read.
Period.
Period.
Which could include.
Nope.
Residential, even.
It can include anything.
High pollution source.
But, yeah, that would include any high pollution source.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, anything else on seven six? Seven six PFS three point two.
Yes.
Requested change to be made. Go ahead, Sunny, if you have, you said yes, so.
Um, yeah, so PSF one point four, I think we can add something in here that we're gonna end up talking about in PSF three. The county should educate the public about water quality, sources, scarcity, conservation methods. And I'd like to add. And wastewater treatment. I'd like to consider adding that.
I don't have any.
That, that's fine.
So it's adding one point four, you say?
Yes, F one point four to read, the county should educate the public about water quality, sources, scarcity, conservation methods. And wastewater treatment. I just feel like wastewater should be encompassed in our education, to our public education regarding water quality. Water resources.
Helping people understand how they work? Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that at all.
They work, why they're important, what they do, what their purposes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Sunny.
Here's my concern. This thing is going to twenty forty in the next twenty years. So who, who amongst us i- is going to be going through each of these items? And following through on them? I mean, setting up classes, teaching, sound, noise, so on and so forth, everything. Is it realistic that these things will even ever be implemented? I mean, where does the buck stop, is my question.
So it will be every staff member, every planning commissioner, every board member to ensure that the things in the comprehensive plan are carried through for the next. Twenty-one years, or after it's approved. So regardless of who sits where, those are the goals of the county. And I can tell you, as far as the educational standpoints of everything that's been discussed, some of that's already done by staff.
Sure. I, um, my question is more, who will assign the tasks to the job description? You know, the person.
Oh, we would. Staff would.
You, you will?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on that item? Okay, we're on agreeance on that? All right, so then that takes us down to anything between now and PS, PFS three point two to three point six?
I do have just a small thing on PSF two point two.
Okay.
I don't, I, if, if it were me writing it, I would delete the provision of. I would just say the county should require erosion control measures. Is there, does that add anything to it, the provision of?
Brittany, does that add anything? You're shaking your head no, it doesn't add.
I had the same note. I have something else on two point two.
Go ahead, Sunny.
I think that as part of new development, also may not add anything to this. And could be scratched. Cause don't we want erosion control measures on things other than new development?
And we do. So have it read, the county should require erosion control measures to minimize sedimentation of streams and drainage channels?
Yes, and, oh, I had one more note. Perhaps if development should be mentioned in here, maybe we should say at the end, during development. Or maybe it's not necessary at all.
But, the, these are already required, uh, rules, uh, regulations, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I see the need for PSF two point one. I don't even see the need for PSF two point two to be in here, cause it's already a required mandate. Correct?
But this, it is, but this adds to the directive of our support of ordinances towards it and gives. Staff direction and reason of why to do it. Not just because some other agency tells us, but this also says the county supports it.
So it's more of a statement, it's not necessarily a goal.
Right, and if it's not in there, it'd be harder to interpret whether, what they meant if it wasn't in there.
Okay. Anything further? Three point two to three point six, oh.
No, Mr. Chair.
I think we're back on two.
Sorry, we're good on two point two.
No worries.
If we're good on two point two, then two point one I had, just maybe for us to discuss the. Clarity of the language, um, where it says minimize drainage concentrations, impervious coverage. And avoid floodplain areas. To me, in my mind, that, that was hard to understand. I think it's meant to say minimize drainage concentrations, minimize impervious coverage. So if you read that, does anyone else find that confusing? Perhaps, um, as an alternative to impervious coverage, we could say. And pervious pavements, which comes up a little bit later, that terminology, pervious pavements.
Any other thoughts? Agree to that?
What are we agreeing to?
That's what I'm trying to verify.
You know, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, this is another one where the requirements for stormwater drainage facilities are pretty well established. And, um. And so to try to re. Try to redefine what a good stormwater facility design includes is. Because for example, now that I'm reading this and thinking about it, what is a drain, drainage concentration? I mean, what is that? I don't know. So I mean, there's a lot of things about this that are. You know, a little bit. I wonder if it shouldn't be. Because we have the stormwater design manuals and. That's, all of this is in there.
And those are based off the directive of a comp plan.
Right.
Not just what is already required, but.
I know, so, but I guess what I'm trying to, thinking about anyways, making this a bit more general to provide that direction without getting into the business here of trying to define really what that design is. What do you think they mean? Maybe I don't, what is a drainage concentration?
I think it actually has to do with the routing of flows and combining those flows. And so the flow becomes more concentrated, if you will, instead of spread out. As flow becomes more concentrated, depth increases, shear forces increase, and the availability to create erosive actions go up.
So that's, so that's a pretty common term then in that?
In the drainage world, yes.
Drainage world, okay.
You floodplain folks agree with me, or no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I believe you.
A lot of that going on these days.
Well, I don't really have any view on it really, because I don't know.
The statements are okay. Again, I, there's already rules and, and things that force those things to happen, so.
Maybe this is another one where listing out the specific things is unnecessary. And we could put a period somewhere further up the sentence, minimize drainage concentrations, period, perhaps. Though I do see the value in pointing out that pervious pavement, or impervious coverage versus pervious pavements is important.
So we're going to leave it, or are we going to change it?
I would, I agree adding the word minimize impervious coverage would help, but meet the intent as, just as a clarification as, as the way it's written, but I, the county should encourage stormwater facility designs and minimize drainage concentrations, minimize impervious coverage, and avoid floodplain areas where feasible, period.
So add impervious, minimize?
I would add one word to the whole thing.
I think adding minimize would be sufficient.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead and put it, we'll put it in there. Just a quick question, since we're coming up on two hours, anybody have their vehicle parked in a two-hour parking spot that needs to get moved?
What?
Does anybody have their vehicle parked in a two-hour parking spot that needs to have it moved? Shall we take a five-minute recess so vehicles can get moved and then we can come back and address the...
All moved.
...rest, motion.
Okay.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no. We'll reconvene at 10:57.
Thank you.
So I know Sandy's not back, we know she had to move her vehicle, and I said we had reconvene at 10:57. So with a motion to reconvene, and she'll be here in a couple...
Motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
And a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nope. Motion carries. I expect she'll be back here shortly. Were we complete on 2.2, I believe, right?
We're on the 54.
We're down to item 54, which is 3.2 to 3.6.
And I'll just say upfront, I, I just thought that the level of detail here was almost a suggestion that the, the septic ordinances should be redone. And I don't know if they should be redone or not, but it just struck me that we should recast that as the objective. And I, that's why I stated here that the, my suggestion would be just to restate these as, "The county ordinances pertaining to onsite wastewater treatment systems should ensure public safety and protection of water resources." And, and so how that gets done would be, you know, to evaluate what we have, to see if there's any shortcomings, and then, you know, assess that. But rather than the level of detail here, which to me is almost a rewrite of the ordinance.
I agree with Kathy.
I agree.
I agree too, as well. So what does that mean? Does that mean we scratch 3.2 to 3.6 and we just replace what you have written as 3.2?
Well, I'd look at it.
Well, I guess, I think that's what I had in my mind when I wrote this.
Scratching 3.2 to 3.6.
And then just rewriting 3.2.
"The county ordinance pertaining to onsite wastewater treatment systems should ensure public safety and protection of water resources."
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
What, what is the source of Matrix's suggestion here? I mean, what is the best practice in the industry?
I don't know if they're necessarily...
I mean, are they just, did they just pull this out of the air, or is there...
No, interviews with staff, interview with elected officials, interviews with other county, other counties, other elected officials in the county from different cities and towns, and also from the public. That's where all these come from. So you, you had a lot of public, especially in the hills, that were very concerned about their septic systems.
Okay, I appreciate that, but this, this is a bit of a quantum leap, is it not, in terms of standards for enforcement? I mean, from, from what we currently have.
Yeah, I think this is a significant increase.
Yeah.
Significant.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm not so sure that this isn't a good idea, but quite frankly, to simply state this and provide no compelling evidence as to why we should, now, I don't know.
Sure. For 3.2, actually, the state doesn't allow them on lots less than an acre unless they were platted prior to a 1975 date. So that's already implemented in the state administrative rules. And as, as we're, sorry, as well as the soil and site conditions, TJ goes out on every single site and does a soil profile evaluation. So those are already done irregardless. And that is also in the administrative rules, that if it, if it's listed as a severe soil by the USDA Soil Survey, that it needs to have some kind of visual observation or confirmation that it is adequate. So that's already addressed. The three years, you know, we went through the ordinance, you know, for two years of testimony and things, and I think the six years that we're on works well just because we have a lot of vacation cabins and things like that. So it kind of is a good median to that. There are some subdivisions that are already on three years. There are some commercials, activities, or some commercial systems that are more frequent. So our ordinance does allow us that flexibility in cases where that may be necessary. And then the 3.4, I just don't know if that would be possible from, like, logistically.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that that was discussed during the ordinances, too, and I think people feel like they would want to be able to choose who does that from the, you know, industry, because they can choose their pumper, so.
It goes up through 3.6.
Oh, sorry.
So that, this clearly needs to be revised a little bit.
Like I said, some of the things we're already doing, and...
Yeah.
So in the comprehensive plan, if it's a state, if it's a state ordinance, then we don't really need to have it in there. I would still like to see the county actually put it in words that they support it. Because a lot of times you hear people say, "Oh, Big Brother's coming down, oh, the state's making us do it." If the county puts it in, that argument goes away. The county is also supporting it.
But isn't this getting into the specifics whenever the, whenever this is supposed to be in general encompassing? I mean, now you're getting into real specific things, which the ordinance in itself encompasses. I mean, the ordinance itself says not less than an acre. The ordinance says, you know, the requirements every six years. The ordinance, you know, that's where you're getting the details, and, you know, our goal, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just the generic overview plan, and there shouldn't be those specifics in there, except maybe in some rare cases. Because even with the FAA issue, we didn't really put specifics in that. We talked about it, but that'll end up going in ordinance rather than...
The specifics should be in our ordinance, not in the comprehensive.
Correct. It should not be in the comprehensive plan. I mean, that, that's what I keep understanding from a lot of things that we talk about. We'll get to points where there are specifics in here, and it's like, nah, that's kind of too specific. We need to, you know, generalize it up, because the comp plan is to be general. And...
So speaking with Brittany before she went down, she would recommend keeping 3.6. And if you want to delete 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5, I don't think we'd have a problem with that. In 3.1, based on your discussions, I would take away the last two words when available. Would that be staff's revised comments?
So you're going to say, staff's request is to remove when available off of 3.1?
Correct.
Is okay with deletion of 3.2 to 3.5, and then keep 3.6?
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Sonny.
I'm generally in agreement that this is a little overly prescriptive. I think what Kathy has suggested is, in effect, an alternative to 3.6, perhaps. Would anyone agree with that?
3.8, Kathy's statement basically is a different version of 3.6, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes, I think so.
So keep 3.6, or should we change 3.6 to what Kathy has suggested? I think both look pretty good to me.
Brittany, did you get a chance to read it? Just, does it fit with what you're thinking?
I think they both say similar things. I think they get accomplished what the goal is, essentially, is to protect the natural resources and public health and safety.
I like the way Kathy wrote it, it's just short and sweet.
I do.
Gets right to the point.
It's short and sweet. So 3.1, do we, do we like 3.1 with removing when available?
Yes, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay. 3.2, striking 3.2 through 3.6, then adding 3.2, which is Kathy's statements in item 54.
Yes.
And without, you know, I just think that the way this 3.6 is written is, "require applicants to ensure protection." Well, you know, the applicants, they, they don't, it's too much for them to evaluate whether they're doing, you know, being protective or not. They just need to follow the ordinance, and the ordinance needs to be protection. So that was really the thinking behind my reword here.
Or their view of protecting may be different than the ordinance's perspective.
That's another point. But really, they, their job is to follow the ordinance. The ordinance's job is to be sufficient to meet these requirements.
Any other conversations, thoughts on...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Sonny.
I have a couple more things for PSF 3. On 3.3, I wondered if, if staff would be interested in keeping, "The county should require onsite wastewater treatment systems to be inspected, period." If we just scratched the once every three years, maybe we can...
Yes.
You like that? At least that's in there?
I think that's better than deleting it, yes.
That's okay with me.
I'm good with that, too.
Any other?
And I have one more.
I'm okay with that, I'm just timelines is a whole different ballgame in my...
Right, the timelines get more specific. The time, yeah, so I don't like the timeline down there, if you're going to say inspected. So then I would say that 3.3 needs to move to 3.2, and our new 3.2 would be at the end as a 3.3.
Yes.
Yep.
Did you follow that, PJ?
Yep, 3.6 moves up, yep.
Any other corrections on that?
So that also addresses number 55, then, I think.
Addresses number 55? Oh, item 55.
Those out.
Oh, yeah, because we took those out.
Right.
Yep. Item number...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I had just one more thing here on PSF 3. I would like the, the commission to consider a new one here, and this, this is inspired by the EPA's initiative to support technological innovation and, and water treatment. So for example, if we added a new one that could say something like, "The county should support technological innovation to protect and ensure the sustainability of our water resources." The point being that over the next 21 years, we could see new technologies become available, and the county should be able to consider alternatives to the systems that we're currently using in some cases.
And we do that now, too.
We do that now.
Yes.
Yeah, so to encourage innovative technologies is the idea behind that.
Problem with that?
Would the commission like to consider that?
I think that's smart. I mean, to me, it's one of these things, you might be already doing it, but to having it written down here, like some of the other things we discussed, is a good idea, so it's, I think that's...
So 3.4?
I had to, "The county should support technological innovation to protect and ensure the sustainability of our water resources." I took that language off of the EPA's website on this topic.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, concerns? We all agree to that, adding in that? All right, so that takes care of that. 3.5, item 56 is dealing with 3.5. We kind of addressed that. PJ pointed out to me the next item, unless anybody else has anything else in this section, we have an individual here for PSF 4.
Good morning, Commissioner. Dustin Willett, I'm the Director of Emergency Management for Rapid City Pennington County. Just a quick comment on PSF 4.6. As it reads now, "The county shall continue to regularly update its emergency operations plan." It's very, very specific. The emergency operations plan is one out of multiple mandated plans that our office is responsible for. Absolutely would encourage the inclusion of 4.6, but rather than making it so specific to that one plan, just something wording to the effect that the county shall continue to engage in, in all aspects of disaster planning or something along those, those lines. Rather than specifically that one plan, there are multiple named plans that are part of our, our overall preparedness and response and recovery efforts in the county.
So something like, "The county shall, on a regular basis, update all county disaster plans," something along those lines?
Yep, yep, just, just not as specific as that one specific plan. Again, it doesn't matter what that verbiage specifically is, just not as specific as it is in this.
Any other wording that we think is the best, or did I sufficiently cover it?
I think you sufficiently covered it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it? Okay.
And also a comment, Mr. Willett also attended a lot of the public meetings for the comp plan, so he was very involved in this.
All right, any other areas to discuss before we move all the way down to 8.2?
Mr. Chair, can we say again what that new language will be on 4.6? We're going to scratch emergency operations plan and its place.
You got to put, "The county shall continue to update all disaster plans." Is there a better term for it? I mean, I know disaster plans, all county disaster plans.
Disaster. Maybe just, if it's acceptable to the commission, "all aspects of disaster planning."
There you go.
There you go.
And that includes the word "shall," right?
Yes.
Okay.
That is a shall.
So everybody knows.
Yes. Well, that's a requirement. I mean, it's disaster preparedness for the county, so. Say again?
It has its place sometimes.
It, shall does have its place sometimes. Not always, but sometimes. Anything between where we're currently at and 8.2? Page 8.2, just as we're rolling through. Oh, not many, not much in between there.
Basically just five. Five 1, 5.2 are the only two things left in that section.
Yep. All right, moving on to, oh, there is an edit error on there. Mine's got page 3.2 instead of 8.2. I think that was addressed already, is that correct?
I think you're right.
Yep.
If not, then it needs to be, because mine says 8, 3.2. And then this is basically removing a private establishment's name out of the statement. Anybody have any problems with that?
No, I totally agree.
Agreed with that one as well? Figured we would all...
So you're on 57?
57, yes. We accept the, the response in there.
Yep.
Anything between here and page 9.2 that needs to be addressed?
Page 9 is a different chapter.
Yep. Last chapter, if we, you know, unless we want to complete it today. Duplicate paragraph is what's stated here, 9.2 and 9.7. On page 9.2 and page 9.7, it looks like they've duplicated a paragraph. No need to have a duplicate paragraph, so might as well remove it. Which paragraph is it? I've just... Which paragraph is it? I've just Oh, there, huh? Oh, the existing fireman's. I see it.
It's nine point seven. Yeah, this first part.
Where does it best fit?
Well, I think it's just a continuum. It's just that these maps were in the middle, so it's just this paragraph right here.
Yeah, I think it's
It's just a, yeah. Yeah, it's the same section.
It's just a carryover is what it ended up being.
Exactly right, yes.
Okay, fair enough. I don't think anybody wants any extra paragraphs in there.
Oh, yeah.
Sunny, we might make two o'clock for you.
Yeah, but now I'm on the fifth floor of the parking lot over there. I'll give you a ride up from two to five. I'm on the fourth floor, too.
Nine seven. So, we've already addressed that one, 'cause that's the duplicate paragraph. Nine seven, nine one.
Number sixty?
Item number sixty.
I agree that to the response, we'll add mention of various search and rescue operations and other examples provided as data is available.
I agree.
Any changes? Everything else looking kosher on that one? All right. Item number sixty-one, which is page nine twelve.
You know, I was just mixed up on this. I, I mean, I'm mixed up, but when I read H S three point two, the county should participate in remediation. You know, when I, when I think of participate, I mean, typically that's financially participate, and I'm thinking, why would the county financially participate in remediation of something that's not ours?
Well, that's a good catch, Kathy.
And so, I, then, anyway, so I made some suggestions here, but, but anyway, then I think, didn't I talk to you, PJ, about that? And you said that there are instances right now where the county's actually financially participating in something?
Correct.
So, maybe there's more to this than I realized when I first did that, so.
Are we financially responsible for participating, or are we voluntarily participating?
That I don't know.
And is there a way to recoup cost if we have to do it?
In this case, yes.
And this, and it's, in that particular instance, yes.
So, I, but it seems to be
I like cooperate better.
Yeah, I mean, to me, cooperate makes it, you, you don't put up barriers of so on, but you don't necess- you don't volunteer to participate financially.
Well, but in certain cases, the county may have to do it.
But, but in those instances, we would try to recoup our money back, you know?
Say again?
We would, we, we would probably assess special lean, or
Right.
Or something along those lines, like, like we talked about earlier today. I, I'm okay, I think, with the wording that, that they have, that they have there in the response.
Yeah, and I am, too. That it should monitor as appropriate, the remediation, but it, I mean, I, I don't object to this, but, you know, we're not really, we're not really concerned with, I mean, monitor is fine, but does it need to be a little more like, like cooperate? So that, you know, let's say they need a permit to do, to put in something that they need to complete the remediation.
Treatment system?
Yeah, well, we would cooperate on getting that happen, getting that permitted and so on. So, to me, monitor is a
Monitor and cooperate?
Yeah, that would be a little more, just, just the word participate kinda scared me, 'cause I've, because of the financial implications, so.
Do you have a problem with monitor and cooperate? Does that do anything for you guys there, PJ? Does it affect?
This is really Dustin's world, not ours. Dustin and Jerome. This is emergency management stuff.
Go ahead, Mark.
So if we're, okay, sheds a new light on things, and I should've recognized that, but, I think when we're talking hazardous waste and stuff, we're probably talking chemical spills and how to dispose of it and that kinda stuff. I don't think we're talking that we're, the county's planning on receiving biological or, or
No.
radi- radioactive, or, you know, that kinda stuff. I think that it has to do with emergency response
Well.
cleanup.
Like a train spill, or?
Well, no, I think this hazardous waste site is like the superfund site at Ellsworth.
And we, we have Mr. Willett on the way back as well. There's also special permits that I, I know we've participated in before, hazardous wastes is even moving through the county. That they have to get special permits with.
Well, I know that.
You're talking like trucking it or on rail?
I believe it was.
If it moves, it has to have a permit?
Right, and they're certainly appropriate to do that. But in terms of, but I think this might be the, you know, the groundwater issue out at Ellsworth, you know, that's a hazardous waste site. It's the only one really in the county.
But when it actually comes to participating and funding, I'm positive we participate and fund in disposal of chemical spill types of situations and that kinda thing. Maybe if we have to apply foam to the runway, we gotta get rid of that.
Right.
I see.
So we would, we would obviously be obligated to financially, but then probably receive some federal funding to pass back.
Yeah. Recoup some of your cost.
They're looking for him right now.
He's like, oh, we're done. Pew, there you went. Go get him, PJ.
He's got a bright shirt on. We should be able to spot him.
Three point two, H S three point two, the county should participate as appropriate in the remediation of hazardous waste sites in the county. We're kinda discussing that term, participate.
And I, my, I'm the one that initially made this comment, and when I hear that in the hazardous waste business, I think about participate financially, rather than more of a cooperate to make sure it gets done. And so, that was the beginning of the discussion.
So semantics are important, as you all have, have debated through this process. I understand that. So the county currently does, and going back to some of the, the previous comments, it's more of a, a statement of, of support and, and fact for this. The county does participate, not necessarily directly financially. There's certainly staff time that goes into it, but the county is not writing checks to cleanup contractors to, to clean up or remediate hazardous material sites in the county. There's extensive federal legislation that, that covers that and recoups money for those remediation activities. The, it's, RICRA is the, the act, and it's called Cradle to Grave. So, anywhere along that, there's multiple avenues for the financial piece of that. But through the local emergency planning committee that the county already has established and supports, we absolutely, in fact, this morning, I, I was at the, the, I'm one of the commissioners on the State Emergency Response Commission that deals with, with, again, hazardous materials, both at the state and the county level. So I think the wording there, as I read it, as, as someone that's been in that, that particular world for a long time, I think the language is appropriate, and participate, to me, doesn't necessarily say we're writing a check. If there's, if the semantics, if the, if the, if what that says to you is, is money, and there's another way to word that, I'm totally open and fine with that. But the county currently doesn't have a, a financial obligation to remediate hazardous material sites, at least it aren't caused by county entities. But, again, extensive, extensive federal legislation that covers the cost part of that.
Well, one suggestion would be to change the word participate to monitor and cooperate.
Fantastic. That, that, that wouldn't change what we do. That doesn't change the, the flavor of what we're already doing and what we will continue to do. So if that's more palatable to the, to the commission, and you like that language better, that's
I like that.
I do, too.
I like the reword as follows paragraph better.
Okay. With the, with the ad of the cooperate as well? 'Cause it doesn't have
The monitor and
Monitor and cooperate, that's fine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other information I can provide?
Are we leaving in as, as appropriate?
Yeah, I think
Yeah, as appropriate.
That seems to be a, that's an out in my
That's an out for you?
Yeah.
Do we make changes?
Do you wanna make changes on that, then? Jim? No, no, I was
No, 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 I, I, I think I just, my own thinking is, is that, that phrase, as appropriate, is kind of a, you know, a side door out of that whole thing. You know, well, it's all not appropriate for us to do this. I said, I, I'm not nearly so frightened of that, but it's fine to put in monitor, cooperate, and, but I'd keep as appropriate in there.
Yep.
Okay. See, the only thing, we're, we're taking that wording and then adding monitor and cooperate, and then the rest of it stays as the reword. All right, nine. Anything between nine twelve and nine thirteen? We've got five one to five four in Kathy's. And it says no change recommended, so.
Where is, I have to find out where, what I was talking about here.
Where are we?
Oh, because this, um
Page nine thirteen, item number sixty-two on our questions.
I mean, and this is fine. I mean, I don't need a change. Here again, it was, it, it seemed odd to me on first reading that this would be here since it's already been done. You know, it's kind of in the past, but then I think, it's, it's considering how we're doing this, that some things we're just restating that have been done and are ongoing. It's fine. Don't scratch my comment. Because that was my thought, that this was already done. This J L U S was already completed, so why are we having it in here? But the question, the answer is, is because it's gonna be, have ongoing stuff and so on and so on, so.
And it affects some of what we do as well.
Yeah, right, so, unconvinced, but.
And they, they call it J loose.
J loose, okay.
During, when you
Not to be confused with screw loose.
Yes.
Any other input up until sixty-three? Item sixty-three is nine fourteen, eight point one.
Nine point four, H eight point one. What did it say here?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'm reading H S six point one, and I'm wondering if the word consider should be added to that as well? Says the county should implement the findings and recommendations of the Ellsworth Air Force Base, J L U S. Should the word consider be added to that goal?
Added where? Consider implement?
Yeah.
Implementing?
And we do now, as far as the noise contours, and also, we have a whole section of our ordinance devoted to Ellsworth.
Anybody have a problem changing six point one? Just, the county should consider implementing the findings, and then the rest of it's the same.
No, it's fine. It's good.
Mr. Chair, if there's findings and recommendations, why wouldn't they be implemented? It's my question.
If they what?
If there are findings and recommendations, why wouldn't they be implemented?
Sometimes there can be findings, and recommendations may not fit, so you would consider, you know, does it fit within, you know, there's a whole ton of factors that would be looked at, 'cause sometimes a recommendation can be great recommendation, but is this something that you can even accomplish?
Okay, so the findings and recommendations could be considered?
And they usually are. I mean, you could tell me if I'm wrong, but they usually are, 'cause the county, the, the community's gonna be like, well, we really do wanna keep the airbase.
Yeah.
So, it's, typically, they'll do most what they can to keep the airbase, 'cause it's a economic driving factor. Any other thoughts? On six one, before we get down to eight one? It doesn't look like there's a change that's recommended on this part either.
No, but I still don't understand it. Why? 'Cause I, if you just read eight, are we in eight dash one now?
Yes, unless anybody has anything else. I didn't see anybody, so.
I just look at this, and I say, should work with Ellsworth Air Force Base to facilitate the expansion of County Road two fourteen, that's fine. And including possible participation with the base through a public, public, private, public, whatever that is, to fund remediation of the contaminator site. I just think, I mean, I just read them, I think, what? The county is gonna pay for remediation at Ellsworth? I just, I mean, it, as I said, on the face of it, it just seems to be, you know, kinda preposterous, but maybe I'm not understanding what this really means. I don't know. But why would we pay for remediation at Ellsworth?
We shouldn't.
Maybe because they employ, what, seventeen hundred people? Something like
But it's federal money. Why would, I mean, it's federal money coming to pay for that. Why would we say, oh, well, we'll, I just, I don't get it.
And is this specifically talking about the, it says the contaminated site, so obviously there's a site in mind. Is this the water, or is this?
Well, they've done multiple, but it's a big superfund site, and there's also, there's a whole bunch of what they call operable units within the superfund site. And so, I don't know, I mean, some of it's the water, that's one operable unit, but there's others.
Right.
This is a point of information for the public and everybody. We always seem to forget that federal money is also our money.
Well.
Right.
We're paying it, we're paying it no matter what. No, I understand not saddling the county residents with additional cost of paying for remediation, but I just, boy, it seems to slip people's minds so often that
Yeah. Well, fair point, but here it almost sounds like it's gonna become in your county budget.
Yeah.
And I just, so I don't know, and maybe there's more to it than I'm not understanding, but I, um
Any ideas, PJ?
No.
Is something we should ask Dustin, too? No, this would actually be something directly to ask Rick, 'cause it was Matrix that did the J loose for Ellsworth.
Okay.
I must say, that is kind of a daunting phrase.
It is.
I mean.
'Cause it almost sounds like you're committing us to, to fund it.
Yeah, maybe one thing to serve coffee and donuts out there, but I don't know. It sounds like
Mr. Chair.
More than that.
Maybe we just need more clarification from
Get it formal.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are there any other ways that the county could participate other than funding?
Well, and I think part of it, they talked about, you know, they, you staffed time to be on the various, you know, at the table, so to speak, and I think that's certainly appropriate. And if there's some, if there's some, the, you know, if this county road needs to be expanded, I think that's, that's the county road, so that's certainly reasonable thing to talk about.
Well, then we should say, including possible consideration or cooperation. I mean, we got rid of the word participation before with cooperation.
But this P, P four is something very specific.
Yeah, I, I think we need to find out what that is, or all this, what the details of this.
Mr. Chair, maybe if we scratched to fund, we could substitute that with something like in relation to the remediation, or just to say that, you know, county could participate, but just get rid of that to fund part of it.
Oversee, over, eh?
I don't have any ideas on that.
I guess I'm in favor of just, let's just get a little more information.
Yeah, let's get some more info on it.
Still rather in the, in the dark.
I'm kinda curious, quite frankly.
We're gonna do nothing with eight point one. We're not gonna do any
Yeah, we're gonna
Recommended changes. Well, there's no change recommended. I'm just starring it and circling it.
Yeah, as to come back to.
I'm putting a whole bunch of notes, just to flag it that we didn't make a decision on that one.
Come back to, okay.
So that gets us, unless there's any other input till nine sixteen, that means we've completed our goal for today of getting seven, eight, through seven, eight, and nine, and I see no public here to comment on it. Anybody wanna readdress anything?
Mr. Chair, would anyone like to go back to element eight on recreation and talk about bike paths?
No.
I'm surprised at how short that section is. I didn't see anywhere that bike paths maybe would fit in, but if it's such an important topic, maybe we should think about it.
That's a good point.
That was the goal, to get through nine. That your goal, okay.
All right. There's a wine trail.
Say again?
There's a wine trail.
Yeah, how could we have a wine trail, not a bike path?
All right, any further discussion on this?
Do we need to make a motion to reconsider this at the next meeting as well?
Well, we just need to make a motion to approve all the changes that we talked about.
Okay.
It encompasses what's, what we said we agreed with on here, the changes we did, and then, do we have to schedule one more meeting, right? Or do we already have one scheduled?
This will be the last of the This will be the last of the pre-scheduled, so if you're gonna do one more, that won't be a problem, um, but I can, I give you the motion for that, too.
No, it's, I gotta look at the dates for advertising.
Yep. So what are you looking at, eighth, or?
Because we're just accepting what we cursorily said we all agreed with today.
Right.
Some of those changes to move forward and have them addressed. Still knowing that there's gonna be some further conversation on some of them.
It'd have to be the second meeting in April, but there was, we're the only one, didn't we?
That'd actually be good.
They're gonna come back to specifically, and this was that one.
Right, well, but that one, we may not, we may not, unless we come up with something ourselves, but that one, we need more information before we can address it.
But isn't that the only one that-
Yeah, that's the only one, that we left outstanding on this particular event.
Yeah, very good.
It'd be great if you could get us any information, clarifying that before our next meeting, so we can readdress it in the next meeting to finish it up.
Right, I'm, I was just gonna comment, so for advertising purposes, it'd have to be the second meeting in April, which echoes, what, twenty-two?
Fine.
Okay, um, hopefully by then also, uh, Matrix, well, Matrix has gone through all the PDFs and the GIS documents for what the proposed new zoning is for future land use around the county. They had to do some things in their GIS world to make it match with the way that GIS and the city works, and to send over those, um, shape files. So that was sent over mid-last week, but the staff at the GIS department in the city can't even touch it for three weeks. So, hopefully by the twenty-second, we'll actually have that available as well, to not only have the answers for eight, for the H S eight that you guys are looking for, but also to have that to look at.
Okay. So the first meeting, the second meeting in April, which is the fifteenth, uh, no, the twenty-second.
So we're gonna cover ten in the end in April, is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, we should be able to, what, we got ten, ten, eleven? Don't know what we have left, right?
An eleven is really looking at whether those goals are gonna be short, mid, or long-term, as far as making them match what the discussions have been, will be Matrix's responsibility to change those.
But really, not much to do in eleven for us.
Well, other than my comment that not one single thing is, is in a long range.
Yeah, there's a lot of short and mid.
Yeah, almost everything is short, coupling mid, but nothing is in long range, so.
We wanna get things done here.
Pardon me?
We wanna get things done here.
We wanna get it going, get it up.
Well, then let's get rid of that column.
Well, but I have another thought on eleven, and that is that, you know, there's a lot of goals that are listed in here that aren't in eleven. There's only, that's only a, really a handful of them that are, and so, my point of confusion is that, why are those the ones that were pulled out to, to put, um, one of those, you know?
On the to-do list.
On the, yeah, so, I just, I'm a little confused about that, really.
Well, maybe PJ could go through the entire document and, and list all of his to-do projects.
After going back and listening to all the meetings, write down all your comments, that's gonna get done anyways.
Exactly.
More work for PJ.
No, I agree, as to what, you know, I, I don't know why those were chosen and others not, but.
So then the first motion will just encompass the approval of every, all the changes that we made today, is that what you were getting at there, Rich?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and then we'll make the second motion for, um, the meetings, the next meetings. Do we want to schedule two or three, or how do we want to do this? Because if we can get through the next chapters and kind of solidify, we'll, we'll want to get through that, then we'll want to have another meeting to just kind of do one last hurrah, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, right?
Right.
So really, we effectively could do it in two, unless there's a lot of public that shows up at that overall one, and then it has to be continued.
When, you know, when you're done discussing and making changes, the Matrix will come back with a updated document for you to look at and hopefully approve in one meeting.
Do we have a time constraint on that? In other words, if we, if we, if we do two meetings now, one, and we accomplish everything in there, and we have a, another one to just make sure that we're all on the same page, then we would schedule a third one for?
The most important one is that very last one, it's the only one required by state statute, all these other ones were-
Right, we're just getting to the heat of it.
We're doing them as we're required to, but the most important one is that very last one, and we're going to give at least a month gap between when your last meeting is, then when you get the final document, and we'll even allow some, uh, public input time for the updated document.
Right.
Then we'll hold the meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When you say "final document", are you talking about this being redone, or this being redone?
Both. So there, the one in your left hand, the Matrix, they're gonna update that and add in the comments that have been made. They're gonna take everything that has been changed and change the document in your right hand, so that will be the recommended document that the Planning Commission will send to the board, and it probably will change after that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I think we should just plan for two more meetings for sure, that gives us two, and then we can... Or do you think we need to do three meetings just in case, and to give us a, a buffer zone before we submit to, just two, just schedule out two meetings?
So your suggestion is two meetings plus the final that happens a month later?
When, um-
I wouldn't schedule that.
Right.
I wouldn't schedule the final meeting.
Yeah, we're not gonna schedule that one until we get the two done.
You're saying two to make sure that we get all of our comments properly to Matrix, so that they can do the redo, bring this back.
And then schedule it for a final, hopefully a final one meeting for me, to go from-
Also, remind you, you guys got a lot done in the last three meetings, which is really good, because it's season and we're getting busy, so your agendas are gonna get longer.
Woo!
Starting next meeting.
Starting next week, well, thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve, uh, chapters six through nine, or six through, yeah, six through nine?
Yes.
That's what we did today?
Seven through nine, well, yeah, six through nine, because we did reevaluate some stuff in six, so yeah, six through nine, the changes that we've made.
Okay, so, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the changes that were discussed and noted during the meeting for chapters six through nine of the comprehensive plan.
Second?
Motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and I would-
Second motion would be to, um, consider, uh, changes to the comprehensive plan, April twenty-second, and would that be May thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have to add any more words in there? Did I say that right, for the public notice?
That sounds-
Could you just read what she would recommend as?
Um, "To continue ordinance amendment, um, dash OA nineteen oh one to the April twenty-second, May thirteenth, Planning Commission meetings to consider the amendment slash adoption of the comprehensive plan."
Yep, I'm good with that.
Is there a second?
Moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no, motion carries, item fourteen, County Board Report.
Sorry, excuse me. Item fourteen, "The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the March eleventh, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting. Uh, one item of note, layout plat, LPL nineteen oh four, John and Ann, um, Hoven Dean's, uh, Fisk Land Serving as agent to create lots one and two, the Cosmos subdivision, was approved with ten conditions."
That change or something?
Uh, that was the one we had a concern about, the parking lot off of that extra, they added an extra condition, um... Trying to remember what that condition is right now. They just added one extra condition-
Is this the, is this the racetrack?
No, this is the property that surrounds Cosmos' mystery area, and they're breaking off a separate lot.
Gotcha. Cos- Cosmos subdivision, if I would have paid attention to that. All right, any questions for PJ? Item from the public, item fifteen, I see no public, item sixteen's, item from staff?
There's also a B. Item A is just kind of an update, um, for the Planning Commission, so the Board of Commissioners have started looking at, uh, the feasibility, possibly, of using speaker cards at their meetings.
Oh.
So, just letting you know, that's something that they're gonna consider, we'll see how it, um, ends up and how it is in practice, might be something that Planning Commission in time might want to consider for large items as well.
Now, is that like, if they have a question and they want it recognized, have to write it on a card first and turn it into someone, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
It works well at the city, you know, the city uses that, and I've always thought it worked well.
Well, I didn't think it worked well with the city.
Really?
Well, because the general public coming, they don't have a clue that they have to fill that out, nobody tells them that they have to fill it out, so they see something on the agenda, they come in, unless there's a gigantic sign that says, "Fill out this request form", then they have to wonder where to get the form, who do you give it to? I mean, you know, when I was in the City Planning Commission, you know, that, that was an issue, I mean, going to City Hall, you know, it, it was not clear, so, it's just another side-
So once the board can implement this, or at least a test of it?
Uh, we're probably going to run a test of it, but my biggest concern was that so many people come up with questions while listening to discussion.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what went in my-
And how are they going to address that? Well, Deb, in a way, kind of called my jets on that, and, and said, "Well, it's not like we're not, it's not like you can't ask the chair to recognize someone in the audience that wants to speak, even if they haven't filled out a speaker request form." That, that cooled my jets a bit, but I, I don't want to see people raise their hand or be afraid to raise their hand because they forgot, or because they didn't have the question in their mind when they got there, but then the crest, question arose while they were sitting, listening to discussion, and then they didn't fill out a speaker request form, and in their brain, they're probably thinking, "Well, I can't talk because I never filled out a speaker request form", so their question never gets addressed.
And that happens more than often, the other thing I would be concerned with, and this is just because I saw an event, uh, I was at the, uh, Air and Space Museum for the public hearing, because my well is in that area, so I've, um, went to that public meeting, and they used the card aspect, too, but it, when you try to lump those questions, sometimes you didn't get the depth of it, because, you know, there, there was three or four people asked the same question, and they, and they combine them together, but then there was in-depth that wasn't considered from the one card or for another card, so, yeah, I guess sometimes you can really lose what you're trying to get at, and then if they say, "Well, we're not gonna do that, or we're not gonna recognize anybody", you know, there's a lot of different factors that can happen. Okay, well, I guess I'll be interested to hear how it goes with the Board of Commissioners, but I, I got a lot of, I would have little concerns on that one. Um, anybody else have anything on that topic? All right, item B, since PJ added item B.
Well, I also added, uh, ha, A and a half, uh, this is the condition that was added to that one layout plat, just to make sure that access is continually maintained of the subject property, because we had some, um, issues with far service access, with some vacation home rentals, and we still do.
Right.
So that was, um, added, I believe, recommended by Commissioner Ross Connect.
Okay.
That's the one. So then item B is just something for, for thought or to consider, kind of, as we are doing the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, uh, we have a lot of developers in the county, not only building codes are we looking at, building inspectors, but also anybody who's working on sediment and, um, uh, erosion control measures, things like that, is having a standard class that they have to have taken and be, and have passed the test in. State DOT has an erosion and control sediment class that everybody, almost everybody in our office has gone to and holds a certification in. I know the city for certain, be able to do certain projects in the city limits, you have to have taken certain classes, have certain levels of certification. Recently, with, uh, individuals that we've been dealing with, and you have been dealing with for some erosion control measures, um, does not even, even aware of how to install silt fence or waddles, which are some of the basic control measures required. So it would, it would add a standard of, um, expectation from the city, oh, I'm sorry, from the, from the county, onto people who are doing business in this, in the county.
So you're talking about business operators, not necessarily individuals?
Anybody who's going to do it. He's doing it for commercial, he's not just doing it for himself, it's a business.
Right, he's doing it as, for a business, but if I was doing it on my home, and I was doing all my own, I wouldn't-
No, it'd be more commercial, it's a, it's, every three years, it's a sixteen-hour commitment for training. It really wakes you up to what needs to be done. But right now, we don't have any real, the cross-the-board expectations of what we're requiring for people, for our installation of store, of, uh, septic systems, we do, um, and it seems to work pretty well, but we don't have it for anything else, and that can cause a lot of problems. So just something food for thought, to think about.
Any questions?
One point of clarification, so the sixteen hours is the DOT course that's, that-
It's a two-day course, they offer it in three different locations in the, in the state, they're doing it here in Rapid, I think next month, actually, and three of us are going to, to have brand-new certifications, and I believe mine, well, I guess I would have to, too, because mine lapsed last year, so.
Yeah, I see, okay.
So PJ, also a point of clarification, if these people, or this, these contractors, or somebody that's doing this for commercial purposes, um, if they are asked to create this control effort, you're going out and inspecting it, correct?
Uh, someone in our office is, yes.
And then they're going to be told whether they did it right or wrong?
And they are, yeah.
So maybe we're just trying to, we're trying to save that extra step where they, uh, or save them some pain by requiring this, so that they already know what they're supposed to do, and they do it right the first time.
It makes them a better operator, and it does avoid the "I didn't know".
Right, okay.
You know, or they spend a lot of money and they install it the wrong way.
Gotcha. So, go ahead, Jim.
Is this a problem? I mean, Mr. Nible could have probably profited from the course, but, uh, has it, has it be, is it a persistent problem with particularly contractors who just don't know how to do that kind of, uh, mitigation, you know?
We haven't had anything really rise to the level of, of Mr. Nible's concern, um, at the same time his was going on, another major contractor had two different sites, where they didn't have any erosion control measure, now they responded differently and immediately started mitigation, and staff went out there and checked, um, but, so we had a, we had a bunch, uh, in a short period of time here, so far, two thousand nineteen, but as far as countywide? Think it could be better.
Okay.
Yes, I think a lot of it, too, is, you know, erosion sediment control costs money, and if they don't want, you know, they don't, it's the last thing that they want to spend money on, to be honest, um, there's a lot of things, those class, that class is really good, because there's a lot of innovative and creative things that you can do, um, to not spend a lot of money, so I think that education piece is important, um, because there's a lot of things on site that you can use, we have one contractor that's very creative in his way of utilizing what's already on site, whether it be down trees and things like that, so you don't necessarily have to use just standard practice stuff, you just have to, to do what you need to do to keep the sediment on the site and mitigate the issues, so that you can be as creative as you want to be, it just, if you don't know what you need to do, you can spend a lot of money putting stuff in that isn't even effective, or you could, you know, spend a little bit of money and do things that are effective, so it, it's just that education, and for us, going to those classes, you learn a lot of the right things to do and a lot of the wrong things, a lot of times, we just see people put stuff up for the sake of putting it up, and it really isn't effective, it just looks like it's effective, but it's really not, so.
Anything further?
When does this class happen?
Oh, I put the website up here, but I'm trying to-
Yeah.
I'd have to look, I don't know. They're tough to get into sometimes, there's usually about seventy or eighty, at least when we went.
It's probably not April fourteenth, that's a Sunday.
We can send out information, at least to the Planning Commission, so you can see it, but, yeah, it's a good class.
All right, anything else? All right, that takes us to, um, item seventeen, items from the membership. Just to point out, because, um, Joan brought it to my attention, for those who don't know, does everybody know you can use the parking garage next door? If you go up a couple, you, there's, we can park over there, and it doesn't affect, I think you're up there now.
Wasn't up there, but I am now.
Right now, yeah, we can park over there, there's another reason, we can't, I mean, we can park over there.
I park there every time now, that I've discovered.
I thought that was where we were supposed to park. I thought that was where we were supposed to park.
I don't know if we, do we have to park there?
Nowhere says you have to, yes, you're supposed to.
Okay, but I was parked out.
Exactly. But if you didn't know, you could park there.
That's good to know.
It's good to know, yes. However, PJ told me that if you park over there, he sees you when you're coming, so then he can at least go tell everybody that you're on your way, so that they scatter.
Oh, so when I'm sitting upstairs and.
Yeah.
I can see everybody walk across the parking.
Uh, items from the membership, anybody got anything other than that? I won't be here, and I'm looking at my calendar, because I'm gonna be traveling the whole week of April twenty-second through the twenty-seventh, so I won't be here for that meeting that we set up on Monday, so Kathy, I think you're in check, no?
I think Sunny is.
Sunny.
No, I'm not, Vice.
I thought you were. Or is it Rich? Your first vice? Were you first vice? Oh, well, then on the twenty-second, I won't be here.
Okay.
I think I gave my duty away.
And then, I, yeah, I think you're right now that we, I remember that now. Anybody else? All right.
Move to adjourn.
Enter, move, motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, no, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, good discussion today.